I can tell everyone on Zoom that we have all supervisors in their seats. And I would like to remind everyone, because I know there's discussions going on about mask safety, I'd like to remind everyone that the Governor of Virginia has issued Executive Order 63, as amended by Executive Order 72, effective December 14, 2020 through now February 28, 2021, requiring all individuals five years of age and older to wear masks or face coverings that cover their nose and mouth when in all local government settings, including, but not limited to, entering, exiting, traveling through, and spending time inside public buildings, including local government facilities. Enforcement is overseen by the Virginia Department of Health, not local government. Failure to comply with this order may be punishable as a Class 1 misdemeanor, carrying a penalty of up to 12 months in jail, $2,500 fine, either or both, and that's Virginia Code 32.1-27. People having legitimate medical reasons for not wearing masks or face coverings may respond to VDH with their justifications. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. Next on the agenda, we have to adopt the agenda, and I'll take a motion.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Comment? If I could, Madam Chair, after what you just said in the opening remarks, I believe there still is an exception for the operation of local government. So it's probably is a very poor word, Executive Order, but I don't think you get much better out of the government anyway, no matter who's in office.
That exception does not apply to the section regarding face coverings. It only applies to the sections regarding the numbers of people in buildings and how far away from each other you're supposed to be.
But we're enforcing that downstairs.
What I can tell you is that the face covering provision is specifically not covered by the exemption and specifically within the wording identifies local government.
The folks downstairs outside should be allowed to come up then if they wear a face covering, correct?
They will be coming up when someone exits. So part of public comment period, I'll be asking people if they don't have a reason to stay longer, to go down so someone else can come up and speak.
That's what I'm objecting to, is that we're enforcing something that's clearly an exception to it in the Governor's order. And we don't have a specific order of our own for that, do we?
We do not, no. I know that court usually...
Actually, well, that's what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make, Madam Chair, is that I don't want to belabor this, but we're enforcing something that we don't have written down.
I'm enforcing something that I believe protects the citizens of this county, and that is my opinion, and if no one else has that opinion, I will definitely listen to the rest.
Unfortunately, it becomes an arbitrary opinion of the Chair instead of that of this board.
That's why I'm open for discussion.
It would have to be taken as a vote, and the Board hasn't voted previously.
That is true. I would be willing to make a motion that we protect our citizens by social distancing when in the courtroom.
And that would be an addendum item?
Yes.
Which would require unanimous consent of the Board.
That's true.
It's really kind of a pointless exercise, because I wouldn't vote to keep members out in the cold. That's what we're doing.
If I can have a second, we'll go into discussion.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
I'm actually not sure of what we're doing.
When the Court's in session, they make sure that the citizens are social distanced and only have a certain number of people in the courtroom. Because of the opportunity to have a very full courtroom today, I was choosing to err on the side of caution.
Yeah. Well, I've said it before in previous votes that we've had, I would not want to be the one responsible for somebody's illness or death, so I would tend to err on the side of caution myself.
If the masks are actually effective, then if everyone is wearing a mask, they want to wear one, I don't see how anybody would have a problem with allowing others to come in. I don't think there's enough outside to have everybody sitting next to somebody. It's only a few people I saw, but we're excluding them from the operation of their local government.
I just don't understand how people are supposed to be safer outside standing right next to each other than they would be in the courtroom, sitting next to each other.
Before we go too far, I think based on your rules in Chapter 30, you have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the agenda that came before the motion relative to the building occupancy, and as much as that's not an amendment to the original motion, then the first motion should be dispensed with before you move on to the second motion.
Well, I don't care to amend my motion, so I'll withdraw the motion that I made.
Any other discussion?
I would only add that we have some people in the courtroom who are wearing masks, others who aren't, and I think social distancing is an additional requirement, is a reasonable and prudent approach. So I'll say I'm on your point.
All right. Move to close discussion.
How many people are outside?
I saw six or eight.
Well, I mean, we have space here and along that side and that here.
Yes, that's what, maybe not articulating my point, but there's enough room for the few people that are still outside.
That's my question, is if there's people waiting outside, people that live in the same household can sit right next to each other, and clearly that's what's happening within the courtroom, and that's completely appropriate. So if there's room within the seating arrangement that's here now to work those few people in that are still outside in the cold, that's what we should do.
Do we know how many people, I mean, do we know definitively how many people are outside? We're talking in the abstract.
I don't know.
He'll find out.
He's finding out.
That's reasonable. I didn't know if it was 20 or...
Yeah, I didn't either.
I had a chairman, about 10 people were outside. They're in the waiting area, they haven't came.
So they're not inside, or they are inside?
They are inside. They're all inside.
Is this a roll call vote, or doesn't matter?
Plenty of room.
Five, six, seven, eight. I think there's plenty of room.
Oh, so...
You can see five, maybe.
Three.
Six.
Five. Yeah, I'd say five can come up.
Both sides?
No, just...
Behind us.
No, not behind us?
No.
I have no issue with more people coming up, as long as it's spread out.
I think we need to finish with the motion and the vote so that we can move forward.
What was the motion?
The motion was to, did you write it down by any way? It's mostly just to keep the citizens safe in the courtroom by social distancing requirements. Okay. We have a motion and a second. We've closed discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm still not completely sure what we're talking about doing. Does that mean we're excluding people from this courtroom, or does that just mean everyone has to sit six feet apart? Because if we're talking about excluding people from this courtroom, then I vote nay.
If we can, however many people are downstairs, if we move them up here and keep people apart, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
I mean, let's move on.
I agree.
That's two against.
Two against.
The motion doesn't carry, so it's an addendum item to the agenda, it needs to be unanimous.
Deputies, the motion didn't carry. If we can bring everyone up and do our best to keep everyone socially distanced where possible, greatly appreciated. Any family members that, or close family members that can sit together, please do.
Yeah, family, Madam Chair, and family members are people that like usually spend a lot of time together, they should be able to sit together, and it shouldn't be an issue.
That is correct.
We need, I think we need to go back and adopt the agenda now that...
Yes, we do.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. School board, school report with Dr. Grimsley, please.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. RCPS schools and offices are closed today for an official snow day. Yes, even with remote learning, we still have true snow days. We do receive quite a few questions about what constitutes the difference between a distance learning day and a snow day. For clarification? Hello? Come on in. I'll pause for a moment. For clarification, our local policy outlines two criteria that must be met in order for RCPS to claim an instructional day via distance learning rather than a snow day. First is meal delivery. Per USDA guidance, meals must be offered to students in order for an instructional day to count in the instructional calendar. On distance learning days, free breakfast and lunch are provided to all families who request them. RCPS holds meal pickups and delivery each Wednesday, providing meals for each day students are learning remotely. So as long as that meal delivery and pickup system is not impeded, then we can claim an instructional day. The other is that students must not be denied access to curriculum. Should inclement weather impact travel to and from internet hotspots before 10:00 a.m., an instructional day cannot be considered since equitable access cannot be guaranteed for all students. So that's why on Monday last week, you saw us have a distance learning day, because those two criteria were met, and as today, that couldn't be met, so we had a snow day. We will monitor travel conditions on our bus routes early in the morning. I've done some traveling today already, and the main roads look fantastic, thank you, VDOT, but we are still having some problematic areas on our bus routes, so we'll monitor those throughout the evening and make a decision about tomorrow in the morning. RCHS completed the fall non-writing SOL testing administration. We are very happy to report that under new criteria for awarding verified credit to high school students, RCHS performed extremely well. In fact, once eligibility was calculated for students who met waiver criteria from BDOE to qualify for expedited retakes or locally awarded verified credit based on artifacts of content mastery, over 95% of high school students in our testing window during the fall semester were successful. So congratulations to the students, teachers, and families for their hard work and dedication in making the fall so successful. RCPS was also recently identified by Virtual Virginia as a top-performing school in our Canvas online learning platform implementation among Virginia school divisions. RCPS was able to implement our distance learning platform with a 99.8% fidelity rate, which earned the school district this designation. It is a true testament of the collective efforts of the RCPS staff, students, and families -- paper sticking together -- working together to ensure the success of every child, whether remote or in person. The amount of time and energy into making a hybrid instructional schedule work effectively is daunting, and to have achieved this fidelity rate is no easy feat. In sports, our teams have been extremely successful. In fact, both our JV girls and boys basketball teams are currently undefeated. Our varsity boys and girls basketball teams are both slated for postseason play, holding the second and fourth regional spots respectively. Our wrestling team is looking to compete in the regional tournament on February 10th, and Scholastic Bowl is currently 5-3, and will have four matches this week, and advance to the regional tournament on February 6. Although weather has caused a slow start to our second semester, plans are underway for a busy spring. RCPS received a grant from the PATH Foundation to continue the wonderful Wednesday Day Camp beginning in March for the duration of the semester. We are working collaboratively with Headwaters to provide safe, fun after-school activities through the Headwaters After-School and Richmond Program. Also, registration is now open for a Saturday Drama Club for students in grades 3 through 7, thanks to a partnership with Headwaters and RAC. At the high school, our student groups and administration are busy planning for multiple scenarios for spring activities such as prom, the senior trip, and graduation, which will largely depend upon the status of the pandemic in our community and what limitations are in place from the Governor's office. We'll keep the community posted as to the status of these events. Finally, the RCPS school board very much looks forward to our joint meeting next week on February 9 to discuss the budget process this year. It is a challenging budget year, but we are confident that if we continue to collaborate and work together, we can offer the very best services possible to the students of Rappahannock. As always, we thank you for your support and advocacy for the youth and families of Rappahannock County. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment should be no more than five minutes, and please, when you stand up, state your name and the district that you're in, that would be wonderful. And I will open public comment at this time. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak.
My name is Terry Dixon. I live in the Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I am also the Chair of the Rappahannock Republican Committee. And I'm here to speak today about what's been going on in the public forum about the, some people saying that you all might want to censure Ron Frazier, Supervisor Frazier, for his exorcism of his First Amendment right in an assembly in Washington, DC. And I realize, I've spoken with several of you, and I realize there's nothing on the agenda that I'm aware of about that. However, it is so egregious that someone would make an accusation about someone's First Amendment right, whether you agree with what he's doing or not. It is so egregious that I had to get here and just speak to that. The Constitution guarantees, by the First Amendment of the Constitution, guarantees our right of free speech and free assembly. And as an individual in the Republican Committee, we firmly believe in the Constitution and everyone's right to exercise those freedoms, whether we agree with them or not. And for someone to accuse someone and say that they're an insurrectionist or whatever for just simply exercising a right is egregious. And I just want to make that statement and make my feelings known. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I just want to clarify one thing. I received a number of email messages that suggested that, one, we had something on the agenda or something was contemplated to be on the agenda, as you rightly said. There's nothing on the agenda regarding Mr. Frazier. Number two, I also received messages suggesting that some of us or all of us were interested in censuring Mr. Frazier in some way. I can tell you that I called Mr. Frazier last Saturday night, and I told him very specifically that I have no interest in taking or supporting any board action against him in this regard. And I just want to be clear that nothing came out of this board along lines of what you've described, so I just want to be clear on that point.
Yeah, I didn't mean to make that accusation.
No, no, I'm not saying you did. I just want to...
No, I did.
No, I just want to be clear, though, because I received a number of emails suggesting that we were looking to take some action in this regard. So, no, you said it absolutely correctly.
Was there something out of order in the proceedings that a point of order was needed? I mean, it's just public comment, correct? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else ready to speak? Interested? I know we have people online as well. Yes, sir.
Just here to say that the fox is out of the hen house. Our federal government's been taken over by communist globalists, and are in control of our legislation and our executive branch, maybe even the Supreme Court. The underpinnings of our constitutional republic are under attack. And we all know how it happened. We can go back to when I was a kid. We had an hour every Wednesday morning, pastor sang songs like "America, America the Beautiful", said the Pledge of Allegiance. We had teachers that were generally 50 years older and older. We moved away from religion. Flip side of that is we've had elites for several generations, or the younger elites now feel like they don't identify with the mass population. They feel like they're smarter than everybody else. We've selected leaders by skin color and sex as opposed to their qualifications. We were taken from the inside by fraud, a fraudulent election. Constitution is under attack. Second Amendment, religion, freedom of speech, press, freedom of press, freedom of assembly. There's no federal or state representation for me, as I see it. My vote really may not count. There's no interest in investigating the electoral fraud that went on. And going forward, how are we going to beat the Dominion machines in any other election? So I know we should do something, we should do it in lockstep. I'd like to see something like a Council of Counties, where you all talk to other counties and form one strategic plan for how we're going to deal with this. It's almost like if we could redline off the areas that we think we can control or want to control. I know what you did with the Second Amendment, making the county a sanctuary county, I think that was a great thing. Now, so many constitutional violations going on, I believe the county should consider establishing the county as a sanctuary, constitutional sanctuary. I would just end that with a quote from Ronald Reagan, says, "Freedom is never more than a generation from extinction." And after 245 years, is that what we want to see happen in our lives?
Someone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Sheila.
Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I think a lot of you know I don't always agree with Mr. Frazier. However, this is a very serious time in our county and in our country. And I wrote a letter to the editor last week about people who rush to judgment, this instant gratification, and people not having all the facts before they just start hurling accusations around, and I just think this is wrong. The Washington Post finally had something that, I don't subscribe to it, but I get headlines, January 19, "Self-Styled Militia Members Planned on Storming the U.S. Capitol Days in Advance of the January 6 Attack," court documents show. So this is something that was quite separate from the rally that Trump had. Now, whether you're a Republican or a Democrat, I think people just need to gather facts and then make some kind of a judgment. There's a radio show after January 6, and for two hours, the host asked people who had attended this rally to call in and say, to share their experiences. And to a person, there were over 20 people within the two-hour period who said they'd gone to the rally, they expressed their support and everything, and then they went home. And they didn't even know about what had occurred at the Capitol till they heard it on the radio. Now, the reason I brought this up is that there's a movie, 12 Angry Men, and it was a court case with a young man who was going to be sentenced to death. And there were 11 people on the jury who wanted to just say, okay, they wanted to just go ahead and make the decision. There was one person who stood up and said, you know, we need to talk about this and go through all the facts as they've been presented. And it took a period of time, but after a period of time, there were enough for an unanimous thing to acquit and render an innocent verdict to this person. So what I'm saying is, this rush to judgment that we seem to be having everywhere needs to be something that we need to stop and just start to gather together. What I said at the end is, keep on being brave enough to speak in the face of differing opinions and be allowed to do so. And so I will dedicate this to Mr. Frazier. It's the man in the arena. It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena. I'm just really angry, sorry. Whose face is marred by death and dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so his place shall never be among those cold and timid souls who know neither victory nor defeat. Now, this is Theodore Roosevelt. And the irony of this whole thing is that in California, there's a school board who's voted to change the name of all the schools with Theodore Roosevelt on it. So we have a great hero of our company who's being totally desecrated by a group of people who are ill-educated and really need to study the greatness of our country and go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping, don't do the clapping, please. Any more folks like to speak before we go to Zoom? Because I think there's probably people there. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol Anne Cole. I'm from the Stonewall Hawthorne District as well, and I'm just here to also offer my support for Mr. Frazier. And I agree with what Ms. Sheila just said very eloquently, that the reason this is so incredibly important is because these are constitutional rights that are guaranteed to every single one of us, whether you are a Democrat or a Republican or an independent. And when there are people in our county that are suddenly jumping on this bandwagon, that we see happening nationally, where they want to say, conservative voices, you voted for Trump, you know, you went to the Trump rally, you must be squelched. You must... you must be squelched, you must be stomped out. And that is very frightening. That should frighten every single one of us to our core. Because if that is happening in this country, then what are we? Are we North Korea? Are we all supposed to have one type of thought, one type of speech that is pleasing to whoever happens to be in control in the government? Just like what Sheila said, it makes me so angry, it's hard for me to talk about it. It's hard for me to even sometimes put it into words, that we have neighbors. These are our neighbors here in Rappahannock County. And Mr. Frazier, totally within his First Amendment rights, attended a rally. And I've also been told that there's some question when Mr. Frazier was simply asking questions of our Electoral Board, our Registarr's Office, about the process, especially now that we have implemented new regulations regarding mail-in voting. And I was there. I was a poll watcher. I attended at the Electoral, at the Registarr's Office, excuse me, to watch the counting. And no one, no one, Mr. Frazier included, was saying that anything illicit happened here in the county. But when there are concerned citizens wanting to make sure, because listening in on some of the statewide conference calls I've listened in on, places like Fairfax, Loudon, and so on and so forth, there were some things going on that should give every single one of us cause for concern. And so when there are concerned citizens in this wonderful place like Rappahannock County who want to ensure that we have free and fair elections, that should be a good thing. Nobody should be told, well, because he questioned anything that happened in the counting process at the Registarr's, then he needs to resign. Well, again, what is this, North Korea? I mean, the whole thought that somebody can question and just say, I'm trying to understand how this happened. So we had mail-in votes, and then the envelopes were cut open, and then they were held in boxes, and then they were... This is all, this is all stuff that it is logical to me that you would say, okay, let's, how did this happen? Let's make sure all of our citizens understand how this happens, so that when you, so that when there is an election, you can say without a doubt, yes, that was a free and fair election. And whoever won, actually won. And when there are, there are citizens here, as we all know, that if you even remotely say, yes, there was voter fraud in the national election, enabling President Biden to be elected. And so if you're a citizen and you say, oh, there were dead people that voted, there were 17-year-olds that voted, there were illegals who voted, and you raise this as a question, again, I think that's just so shocking that if you raise these questions, then there are those in powerful positions that want to say, they must be silenced. You may not speak of that, because the election is over. And I just want to say that, as neighbors, we should all be supporting each other. And when Mr. Frazier, he's just an easy target. You know, when he brings up some of these questions, it could be me, it could be you, it could be any of us. And no one should be made to feel like, you can't say that. That's not the norm of how we're all going to think from here on out. And so that's all I came to say, is that our constitutional rights are really, I don't know, I've never seen, I'm only in my 50s, but I've never seen anything like it in my lifetime, where people are ready to just say, well, I don't like what you said, so you need to be silenced. And as a citizen in Rappahannock County, and how close we all are as neighbors, I just hope that we will remember that, that we need to support our neighbors, and it's okay to have sometimes a difference of opinion and to ask a few questions. That doesn't mean you immediately need to be silenced or censored or told you have to resign from whatever position you have. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please hold your applause, please. Anyone else here like to speak?
My name is Sharon Propper. I was wondering if I could take this off. It's suffocating me. But anyway, I just wanted to, I know that I've seen that President Biden has been quoting a few scriptures, and I was reading the other night. Thank you so much. I was reading the other night, and I came across this. It's in Psalm 64 in the Amplified Bible. And I guess it pertains to a lot of situations that's going on right now. It says, Psalm 64, starting with verse 2. It says, "Hide me from the secret counsel and conspiracy of the Ungali, from the scheming of evil-doers." Three. "Who wet their tongues like a sword, who aim venomous words like arrows, who shouts from..." Sorry, I forgot my glasses. "Who shouts from ambush, the blameless man, suddenly..."
Sharon.
Okay. Thank you so much. It definitely helped.
They won't look good on you.
Oh, okay. This is a little bit better. Thank you. All right. "Who wet their tongues like a sword, with aim venomous words like arrows." Sorry. "Who shouts from ambush, a blameless man, suddenly do they shout at him without self-reproach or fear. They encounter themselves in an evil purpose. They talk of laying snares secretly. They say, who will discover us? They find out acts of injustice and say, we have accomplished a well-devised thing. For the inward thought of each one is unsearchable, and his heart is deep. But God will shout and will shoot an unexpected arrow at them, and suddenly shall they be wounded. And they will be made to stumble, their own tongues turning against them. All who gaze upon them will shake their heads and flee away. And all men shall reverently fear and be in awe. And they will declare the word of God, for they will wisely consider and acknowledge that it is His doing. The uncompromisingly righteous shall be glad in the Lord, and shall trust and take refuge in Him. And all the upright in heart shall glory and offer praise." Well, the point I was making is, I know it's kind of hard, because these glasses are not fit for me, but anyway, it's somewhat better. But if we keep just going at each other, it's not going to be good. And in the end, it's talking about their own tongue turning against them, which we're already seeing situations like that. And recently, for the first of, for the first of the new year, I put this in the letter to the editor in the Rappahannock News, the Gettysburg Address, because this, to me, I had my kindergarteners learn this by heart, but this, to me, goes right along with what's going on today. "For score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation, or any nation so conceived and so dedicated, can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of that field as a final resting place for those who here have gave their lives that that nation might live. It is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. But in a larger sense, we should, we cannot dedicate, we cannot consecrate, we cannot hollow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here, have consecrated it far above our poor power to add or detract. The world with little note no longer remember what we say here, but it can never forget what they did here. It is for us, the living, rather to be dedicated here to the unfinished work which they, who fought here, have thus so nobly advanced. It is rather for us to be dedicated here to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they here gave them the last full measure of devotion, that we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth. And I just want to thank you for putting up with me. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon.
Do I have anyone else here in the courtroom that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Anderson for the Piedmont District.
He gets paid to do that.
Yeah. I already sent a letter to the local newspaper on this topic, but I will just refer you to that. It was published a week and a half ago. They actually published it, "Supporting Ron Frazier's Constitutional Rights for Freedom of Assembly and Freedom of Speech." And I don't think, he has anything to be ashamed of for what he did. I think you all are nonpartisan, elected to this body. It's a part-time job, but probably isn't really. You're entitled to have a private life in addition to your public life here in this county, and you're entitled to have private political opinions. You need to pay attention to what's going on in Richmond. You need to pay attention to what's going on in Washington, D.C., beyond the boundaries of this county, because things happen there that affect us. And I think that's what was happening on January 6th, at least in Ron Frazier's case. He went up there to get informed about what was being said, what was going on. God knows you don't get it from the media down here. And so I think he's absolutely within his rights to have done what he did. I'm glad you're not trying to sanction or censure him or anything else for what happened on that day. And he has my support. I think all five of you have the best interests of this county at heart almost all the time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? Yes, Mr. Lenny?
Page Glenny Jackson District. I think this issue was a lot bigger than Ron. This county primarily overwhelmingly voted for Trump, and there's a lot of people that feel their constitutional rights are in jeopardy. And I think that's why you've got such a great reaction to these other letters in the paper. As leaders, I think you all need to find a way to calm the community down, because I don't think this is going away just with one meeting. All right. I would suggest, similar to Roy said, and as you proposed, Mr. Parrish, that you pass a resolution just stating that you support the Constitution and the First Amendment rights. Some act that shows that you understand and you support those rights. And I think that would help a lot to calm down the community. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead. I'd like to speak on different subjects. I'd like to, because the comments on the subject are completely different.
I feel obligated to speak today. These are my ancestors that fought with the copper for Minutemen. They're also some of Ron's ancestors. Ron has deep roots here in Rappahannock. He feels we all are distantly related, the old families, and we think alike. And Ron represents us very well. And we're very proud to have him in this position and hope he stays there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else in here? Yes, sir.
Perhaps while people are still queuing here, anybody online who wants to speak, if you could raise your hand, that would be helpful when we get to that point.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Jock Nash with the Hampton District. I'm pleased to speak on behalf of Ron Frazier and the U.S. Constitution. I have fought in combat, and my son as well. And I've seen lives lost. And when they're dying, they're not saying, oh, boy, I'm sure glad I died for liberty. They're crying for their mom. But for those of us that came back, he died for our liberty. I don't want this county to get into some sort of cancellation culture mode. But if you do, bring your lunch, because there are a whole lot of us that draw that line. We have that line. And I thank you for your time and all of my support for Ron.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Margaret, before I go to the Zoom, I wonder if you want to go ahead and say what you've got. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Margaret Bond from the Piedmont District. I have a different subject to speak on, but this is my opportunity to address the board, so I'm taking advantage of it. An item will be coming up in the agenda shortly relating to the appointment of Library Board of Trustee members. And I'm here to speak, support for reappointment of one of the current trustees by the name of Randy Schumate. I'm somewhat responsible for Randy being on the Board of Trustees. I've known her for a number of years, and when I became aware that there was an opening on the Library Board, I said, oh, Randy, you need to apply for this. Because I knew she had just the background that the library needed. She is a school teacher. She has served in public library capacities, various capacities for school libraries for over 20 years, and is just very concerned and interested and experienced in all matters relating to library, to library services, to library services, particularly for school-age kids. And since she did apply, was appointed, and I certainly kept up with her on all of the activities of the Library Board. And I know she's been very dedicated to her work there. She's made every meeting. She has been engaged with the library improvements, with personnel issues, with the ongoing plans for either expanding the library or moving the library altogether, and just has brought a wealth of her experience and her dedication to that position. I'm speaking and hope that the Board of Supervisors will favorably consider her application for reappointment, so that the same dedication and experience that she has already displayed in serving on the Board of Trustees can continue, particularly as much of the work that is ongoing with the library is, it is very helpful to have a continuity of support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Deke Deekins, Hampton District. I wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors on the 21st of January, and that speaks for itself. I'm here in complete support for Mr. Frazier and his exercise, his constitutional right to freedom of assembly. And I don't think this needs to be eroded in any way, shape, or form. And I'm glad you're not taking any action, but my letter will speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the courtroom? No hands, Mr. Curry? Do we have hands on electronic media?
Not at this time, although I'll just note again, if people participating by Zoom would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand. There are three ways you can do that, depending on the platform you're using. Those are listed on the screen. If you are on the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine.
I'm not seeing any. Are you?
No, they would go to the top of the list.
All right. I'm going to close the... I'm going to close the public comment period and move on with the agenda. Now, we have the consent agenda. If I can have a motion for that, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as it's presented.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chairman, may we have just a quick question about, I noted that there was an elevator company charge on the accounts payable, and I just wanted clarification about what that was for. I wondered if it was for the inspection of the lift in the back of the courtroom?
Madam Chair, should we pull the accounts payable out? I think that would be the right.
Or I could quickly utter the fact that it is in fact due to that.
Okay.
Okay. That was all, my only question.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're moving into the presentation period. I know we have Mr. C. and Mr. Ponton that were going to be joining us from Rappahannock Electric. Do you see them?
I do see them, and Dr. Kerschner is also online, another item.
Excellent.
Coming up, so I'll allow you to change orders if you, Board deems fit, but let me know.
I do believe it probably makes sense to let Dr. Kerschner go first, since I can assume he is extremely busy with the vaccines, et cetera. Are the rest of the Board members okay if we do that?
Yeah. Is it just a motion to amend the agenda to that extent?
Ah, yes. Making a motion to amend the agenda so that Dr. Kerschner, who is, where is he?
F four, the COVID-19 update.
F four. On, under presentations goes up to one. Have a second?
I think if we do that, then we have to reorder also the Rappahannock Electric.
I think you can just take it as the first presentation item and the rest to follow in order.
Okay. So, get rid of the, the motion?
No, with a motion.
With the motion?
Yeah. I didn't hear a motion.
I was making a motion that Dr. Kerschner would go first.
Oh, you did. Donahue, second.
I'll make the second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Dr. Kerschner, if you're there and can hear us, we'd love to hear from you, that's for sure.
He needs to unmute himself. And see if we can hear you, sir. We cannot hear him. Hold on one second. Try now, sir? Standby.
Standby. Technology.
How about now, sir? He's muted again. Can you try again, Dr. Kerschner?
Dr. Kerschner, can you hear us?
Standby. All right, now go ahead. I think it's on our side. You should be good to go now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. It's good to be here with you this afternoon. I'd like to start out briefly with some health district level data and then move on down to Rappahannock County. As of today's data, we have 9,526 cases in the district, 370 hospitalizations, and 93 deaths recorded in the district since the start of the pandemic about 10 months ago. And chief data, what I did instead of raw numbers, I looked at total cases per 100,000 population over the last two weeks, and this points out something interesting. What we have is we have each of the counties will sort of wax and wane in where the outbreaks are, and the numbers are trending, either up or down. And early on, Culpeper was doing, having a lot of cases, and then they went down, and then Fuck Year, and Orange went up, and they've gone up and down. But the total cases over the last two weeks, divided by 100,000, so this is a rate, Culpeper has the lowest rate at 493 cases with 100,000 people. And interestingly enough, Rappahannock County has the highest of our five counties, at 730 for 100,000. Granted, Rappahannock County doesn't have a lot of numbers, but when they do change, it really shows us that over the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of cases on a rate basis in that county. When you, when you look at that in, in terms of overall numbers, still, there's only been 260 cases overall since the start of the pandemic in Rappahannock County, with 14 hospitalizations and two deaths. And those last two numbers, we haven't changed that much over the last few months. But like I said, over the last couple of weeks, we've been seeing more, you know, cases per capita coming out of Rappahannock County than any of our other counties. So, that's something that we need to take, keep an eye on. We also have some vaccination data, and this also is done as a rate of vaccine doses administered per 100,000, just to do this for comparison from one county to another. Our highest rate is Orange County with 12,207 per 100,000. The next highest is Culpeper, 9712. And the third is Rappahannock at 9620, followed by Fuck Year County at 8883, and Madison at 8182. So, Rappahannock County, as far as vaccinations given, is right in the middle of the pack and right behind Culpeper for number two. We have, in terms of raw numbers, 790 have received at least one vaccinated, one vaccination, and 48 people in the county are fully vaccinated. And another part of the vaccination update, as most people have seen from the media and from my email postings, there are very limited supplies for the next four to eight weeks, and our district is receiving approximately 2,000 doses per week. Half of those doses, we give at our central site at Germanna Community College, and those are Moderna doses. The other half, which are all Pfizer doses, they're due to the following organization. And we, we did this to split it up in a equitable manner to the five counties. So, Culpeper Medical Center is going to be receiving on a weekly basis until allocations change, 350 doses, and they will be covering the Culpeper and Madison footprint. Fuck Year Health, as well as Piedmont Family Practice, will be receiving 325 doses and 100 doses respectively, and those cover the Fuck Year and Rappahannock counties in their footprints. Orange Family Practice will be receiving 200 doses, and those are slated to go to the Orange County area. And so, for the next few weeks, that's what it's going to look like, and hopefully we'll get more. We did hear some rumblings from the federal government that there might be an increase of vaccinations of 16%. Allocation increasing by 60%. We haven't heard any details of what that might mean, and then we heard the other day that that is something that might be happening in the near future. So, nothing immediate, but if that changes, we'll be parking that out to those various partners in an equitable and even fashion based on population as well. So, if anybody, like I said before, to find out whether you are over 65 or have a crazy medical condition, you can go to rrhd.org and sign up and fill out a survey for those categories. If you don't have access to a computer, you can go to 5403086072, and we will have somebody assist with filling out that survey. Obviously, if you're in Phase 1A and you're for Phase 1B, as outlined by the Virginia Department of Health in the priority groups, there are surveys there as well for people to fill out and get put on waiting lists. The vaccine, as I said, is about 2,000 doses per week. We have over 25,000 people on our list in the five counties currently, so unless we get more allocation, it's going to take us a good amount of time to burn through the people that are currently on those lists. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
How do I do it? Walk the microphone?
First, can I let the Board members go first, sir?
I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone here have questions for Dr. Kerschner?
I can't think of anything offhand. I'm happy to let the public go first.
Anyone else? Okay. They don't? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Doctor, for the knowledge. My name's Ed Timberlake from the Hampton District. You may not be able to answer this, but then again, maybe you can. I noticed various variations around norms for the different parts of your catchment area. Have you looked at any modalities that cluster to drive these numbers up that we could learn from? Is there statistical probability on certain counties or some way in which you have predictive factors that we could improve here or do something different? Is there any kind of analysis going down that path? Thank you.
I only talked every little word of that question.
Oh, I didn't see.
I'm sorry. When you do your analysis of the various clusters of the virus in this catchment area, are there statistical or probability indicators on where it's going or events that triggered the certain clustering together of people getting sick? In other words, is there something we can learn in this county from your analysis that we should or shouldn't be doing, besides the normal, which we've heard, wear masks, do social distancing? What do you count the variation from?
What we've noticed is that most of the cases that we have right now are really fairly unrelated to outbreaks most of the time. Right now, we have what we consider mostly just community spread. We still have outbreaks occurring, and those typically will happen when people are getting together in, in large groups. But right now, we, we just see people spreading it from family member to family member or from friend to friend, and there's no overriding statistical notices of where they might be occurring and where they will be occurring. So, the bottom line is that people need to continue to sort of stick with people that you know, stick with their families and the following large groups, because that's where they're going to come from. I will notice that schools, schools, for all of the press that's been out there regarding school openings and school closures, most of the outbreaks that occur in schools aren't occurring between students and students or teachers and students. What we notice is that people are becoming infected outside of school, in their families, or when they meet after school or in extracurricular activities and then bringing it into schools. So, our, our stress has always been that if, if you're not around a lot of people, your chances of getting infected with a virus will go down.
Thank you, sir.
The one thing that I would like to clarify on the vaccines, when someone goes online or calls in to get in line for a vaccine, it's my understanding that there's not a priority, it's first in, first out kind of thing?
Well, there, there is a priority in that only people that are in the priority groups should be getting in the line. But once, once you're in the line, at least, let me clarify that. We, we're looking at two groups. We're looking at the personal groups, which are those elderly and those with medical conditions, and then the other group is all those that are in the workplace groups, Phase 1A and Phase 1B folks. We do prioritize those folks, because they're the priority, a subpriority in the work groups. But as far as the other half of the equation, where all the elderly and those with medical conditions are, those are coming in at, at first in, first out. I will say, like I said previously, that there are thousands and thousands of people on the list, and we are working through them and calling each one, but it takes, it takes a long time to get through that sort of a number, especially with the non-vaccine we have. So, in short, the answer is there is some prioritization going on with the base groups, but if you're, if one person is 74 and someone else is 78, there, there's not going to be any prioritization of that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Carolyn Butler, Piedmont. I went online and did the survey for myself and my elderly relatives that didn't have a computer, and we were shortly called to go to Germanna, and we had gotten our first vaccination. When we left, we were told for the second vaccination to fill out the survey again, and they would call us. But you stated elsewhere that we would be contacted by email. So, I'm responsible for some people in their 90s, and I need to know what to do to get the second injection that is supposed to be done on February the 15th. They also told me at Germanna that if I couldn't get it on the 15th there, I needed to search elsewhere in the state. So, I need a clarification, please. Thank you.
Sure. Sure. There's no need to fill out a second survey, and I will firm up the messaging there at Germanna, if that's what they're sending. There's no messaging for that. What we are doing is, a week or so prior to when you should receive the vaccine, we are either emailing or we're going to call folks to fill out that second vaccination.
Thank you.
Dr. Kerschner, I have had constituents, too, that have filled out the survey and haven't heard anything and wondered if they should be calling to follow up. Could you just reiterate for all of us what the best number is to call if you have questions? Like, do you need to fill out another survey for your second shot? Or was your first survey received correctly so that the folks know that they're calling the right number to get their questions answered?
Yes. The number is 5403086072. Now, they may have to leave a message, because we get hundreds and hundreds of calls a day, but we are working through all those messages every day with the staff that's getting larger every day.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Kerschner. And then just to follow up on your question, your statements earlier about schools, this might be putting you on the spot a little bit, but I mean, in your estimation, is the, is the risk to children in schools, then, it sounds like relatively low? And certainly, since they are already participating in sports and other outdoor activities or extracurricular activities outside of school, and associating with each other in that context and as families, would you quantify the, the risk of children returning to school as, as a low-risk activity?
Our stance and the stance of the, of the health district is that we will provide the, the jam that supports or doesn't support actions by school boards. But my personal opinion is I think kids need to be in school.
Thank you, Dr. Kerschner. Dr. Kerschner, when is your last day on the job?
It will be the 4th of March, Friday, the 4th.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity then to thank you for all the hard work you've done on behalf of Rappahannock County, and to let you know how very much I appreciate always your good insight, common sense, and caring for the people of not only our county, but also the entire health district. And, you know, in terms of who And, you know, in terms of who we could have gotten to lead us through this thing, I think you've just done a stellar job. And I just wanted to thank you so much for all the efforts you've put forth on our behalf.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Karchner. We will definitely miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karchner.
All right. Now, we're going to Rappahannock Electric Cooperative update regarding ARDOF. We have Mark C. and Mark Ponton from Rappahannock Electric. And Mark C. has been in contact with us for probably a year, answering questions from Ms. Bond and I and other broadband committee members. So he is well aware of the Rappahannock situation. And I look forward to hearing, and I do believe he's got a PowerPoint that Mr. Curry is pulling up right now.
Thank you, Chair President Don. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Would you all hear me?
I do believe so.
Great. Again, thank you for the Rappahannock Board to allow us to come speak to you today. I very much appreciate this opportunity. I want to take also this opportunity to introduce someone you have not met before. It's Mark Ponton. Mark, today is Mark's official first day as REC's Director of Broadband and Fiber Services here at the Cooperative. Mark will be joining me today. I turn to him on occasion throughout this PowerPoint. But I did want to introduce him to the Board, to the folks there at the county for any and all conversations going through the line and forum before. And we'll be very closely with Mark as we go forward. So, thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, just some real quick facts, and I'm not going to belabor this at all. You all know the Cooperative, 22 counties, 4,000 square miles territory, 170-plus thousand services, et cetera, et cetera. Number of employees. We've been very close with Rappahannock County and all of our 21 other counties who have our service territory for many, many years. So again, we appreciate this opportunity. I will say that the great folks there in Rappahannock County, Mr. Curry and others, Ms. Donahue, that actively engaged with us probably from the very beginning within our fiber project. And I appreciate that closeness and staying abreast of all the opportunities that our fiber project has worked to achieve. But we're going to be talking about some things here very shortly that are a little unfortunate. And I'll get to that here in just a second. Next slide, please. Just real quick about our service area. Again, you all know this is where we stand. We make sure that the Chesapeake, all the way up to the West Virginia State Line. But the state of Virginia, there in Rappahannock and many other areas within our service territory, we recognize this as a huge digital divide. We heard it loud and clear from our members across our entire 22 county service territories, not just there in Rappahannock. We understand the issues that the lack of broadband has caused not only the citizens there, the students in the schools, the people that are trying to work from home to stay digitally connected, particularly with the COVID pandemic that hit early last year, in this case, which has propelled the need again for broadband or access to quality broadband. Your Cooperative heard that loud and clear as we began our plans and looking forward. Again, next slide, please. We began our fiber optic network that I discussed with many of the folks there in Rappahannock. Actually, in the September 2019 timeframe, we recognized, again, the huge broadband issue across our service territory. At the same time, we reached a point within our own internal networking capabilities that we had to do something for this project, I mean, for some. So at that time, in the early 2019 timeframe, we began a project for the 120-mile backbone throughout our service territory. And then put up enough fiber optic cable, way more than we needed because we wanted to be part of the ultimate, an ultimate solution throughout our service territory. Our goal from the very beginning was to support the community to be served and try to find opportunities to work with individuals all along the way to leverage the assets we were going to be putting in the air, utilizing our existing infrastructure, our poles, our rights-of-way, our people. We were going to leverage all of that to establish this backbone service throughout our service territory, running through Rappahannock County and all of our other counties for that. Next slide, please. I began that six-year construction project connecting our 130 substations, radio towers, offices, et cetera. We focused, and you can see there on the right-hand side, in and around the Culpeper area for a couple of key reasons. One, our Culpeper Regional Office is also our disaster recovery business community site. It is the site that something were to happen to Burgessburg or possibly our other offices as well. We could recover operations effectively and in a timely manner all within the Culpeper area and within our Culpeper office. The other major reason we focused on the Culpeper area is Culpeper is served by the Equinix Data Center. Part of the Internet Exchange Services of NetCOS in the U.S. That is the Internet connections right into the Equinix Data Center. It's an Internet presence. We can go anywhere once we're able to stop the Equinix data center. Again, those were the primary reasons we focused our first 800 miles of that 820-mile backbone in and around the Culpeper area meeting up, coming out of Orange and through Culpeper. So that was our area of focus, and that's what we've been working on pretty much the last year. Next slide, please. However, all that time that we were focused on building out the fiber utility network, in many conversations we had with people there in Rappahannock and other counties, we also became aware of something called the World Visual Opportunity Fund. We became aware of it probably in the very late 2019 timeframe. All of the time we were building out, we began to build out the backbone. I think I had explained to the folks there in Rappahannock before, we had done a feasibility study back in the very early 2019 timeframe, looking to take the broadband out to the communities. And at that time, if it wasn't financially feasible for us, that was the reason we made the decision to focus purely on the backbone. However, that was before ARDOF became an option. Once we started examining the possibilities with ARDOF, we determined that with a significant amount of federal dollars that would be available to Rappahannock, that could potentially change the business case, the financial forecast for Rappahannock to enter into broadband business. So for pretty much all of 20, of 2020, starting very early on, we, even though we were still focused on building out our fiber utility network like we had promised, we also started investigating how we could participate in not only the ARDOF auction, but at the same time, how that would change the business case for us and make this financially feasible from a dollar standpoint, scheduling standpoint, a people standpoint, et cetera, et cetera. That led up throughout 2020, pretty much right up to the October timeframe, keeping our Board involved the entire way for the Board to make a rather historic and a unanimous decision for us to enter into the ARDOF auction and compete against any and all others for bringing fiber-based, fiber-speed broadband to come up as a retail broadband provider and enter into that business. Next slide, please. At that time, in early October, our Board approved us, again unanimously, to invest over $600 million. It was probably the largest project that the Cooperative ever actually done. At the end result, becoming a retail broadband provider. And again, this is something completely outside of the Cooperative. It was done by several others, obviously, here throughout the state of Virginia and across the nation. But it was a significant decision for us and one we did not take lightly at all. However, the business case was there. The ARDOF auction itself made a negative business case become a positive business case. And again, the Board made that decision for us to get started. The ARDOF auction technically began on October 29th of 2020. We led up to that decision and actually entered into the auction in time to start participating when the auction opened up on the 29th. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, several days after that, again, the auction had actually begun, we had a federal lawsuit filed in District Federal Court challenging one of the key components of our approach in the business case. And that's our ability to use our existing electric utilities, electric utilities, rights-of-way, the lines, the poles that run through private property and landlines and ladder 22 county service territory. A law was passed, actually back in July 1st, trying to clarify the use for electric utilities to utilize those rights-of-way, for expansion of broadband. We took that apart, and we were moving forward under that assumption that we and anybody else would use those rights-of-way. We do have issues with landlords from town to town who question the right that the Cooperative has to put up additional wires on those poles. That law that was passed back in the July timeframe was supposed to clear any of that ambiguity, which we felt were stronger than it did. However, by having this lawsuit filed, it's really challenging the constitutionality of that law and the rights of Rappahannock to use those assistance utilities. Next slide, please. So unfortunately, at that point, not long after we actually technically entered into the auction with the lawsuit pending, we made the decision to withdraw from the auction at that point. You ask yourself, why did they do that? Unfortunately, again, the business case, the cause of the business case that we were moving forward on was all around receiving ARDOF money. We had to withdraw from the auction that money obviously was no longer going to be there, but turned it back into a negative business case financial forecast. Unfortunately, with having to focus on the lawsuit, there are a couple of key aspects of participating in ARDOF. There's a very stringent time period at which we have to follow up, number one. Within the first three years, you have to have 40% of your service territory covered and available to develop services. After the end of the fourth year, you have to have 60%. The fifth year, 80%. And the sixth, the final year, it was 100%. If you are unable to meet those bill requirements and service requirements, you are subject to FCC penalties along the way. With the lawsuit making it, putting that in question, along with the not having the ARDOF money available, creating such a financial risk, our leadership and Board of Directors decided, unfortunately, we have to withdraw. That was the reason for the coming out of a rather historic ARDOF auction here across the U.S. Next slide, please. This is some of the funding that was provided through the ARDOF auction. There will be more and more information that comes out through the FCC and others now through the quiet period, which we've been under since July 15th, 2020, which actually concluded right this past Friday, the 6th of July. During that entire time, to everyone's disagreement, for lack of a better word, not being able to talk openly and publicly about our status along the way, that was all because of what the FCC calls those prohibited communication rules. We could not, with the threat of penalties, speak to anyone on the outside about any of our plans when we came to ARDOF, other than simply allowing everyone to know we would participate, which we would. But that said, you can see that particularly there in Rappahannock County, a couple of key winners there in Rappahannock County, Shenandoah Cable Television and SpaceX Corporation Technology. That's SpaceX, by the way, that happens through Elon Musk's company and his pitch to provide broadband services over satellite, which actually won dollars there in Rappahannock County. More, again, will come out in these, some of the more detailed information now that, again, the quiet period is over. More and more of this type of information will be coming out here in the coming days and years. Next slide, please. Again, the key winners, Shenandoah Cable, $700,000. SpaceX, 928 locations. Those are household, those are small businesses. Those are individual subscribers. Their award was just over $1.7 billion. Again, maybe this information possibly could change a little bit now that the quiet period is over. This comes really, the source of this information is coming directly from the FCC, federal, and the US. Okay, next slide, please. So what's Rappahannock doing now? We are focusing on seeking out partnerships. We are focused now, we know we're still building our 820-mile backbone. We're looking for any and all new partner with us to help go back to the drawing, not go back to the drawing board, but go back to our original premise of utilizing our infrastructure that we are putting up and the excess capacity that we're going to have with our fiber utility network for individuals, companies, who, when we were doing the ARDOF auction, were really kind of seen as potential competitors. It was hard for us, as much as we wanted to, to engage in some of those competitions and in some of those conversations because of the competition that that could essentially provide. Now that we know we're not going to be in the retail broadband business, we're back to looking at those partnerships aggressively as we move forward. One of the ones, and I think probably everybody knows back recently, Louisa County publicly announced that they're putting up $15 million to have companies help bring fiber-based broadband to the counties there in Louisa. We want to work with that. We want to work directly with them on that. We want to look at these types of opportunities that are potentially now forthcoming given that we had, unfortunately, made the decision to not be in the retail broadband business. Next slide, please. Here are your local contacts, Region 1 and Region 2. Both Mr. Lindsay and our Board Chair, Mr. Scheit, serve the folks there in Rappahannock County. Those are sources of additional information as we go forward. Obviously, Mr. Huer, our President and CEO. Dr. Peter Mahara, who's our Vice President of Strategy and Technology, who is not boss directly. You see me, both myself and Mr. Ponton down on the right-hand side. For the folks who go there in Rappahannock, we have a long and successful relationship, work with Mr. Oliver Price, who's our Director of Member Service and Community Relations, not only there in Rappahannock, but in the Culpeper region. And that's all supported now by Mr. Sean McDonough, who is our new manager of our Western Region, having both the Culpeper and Blue Ridge offices. All of these folks are available for additional information and active contacts as we go forward. Again, our project is not going anywhere. We're just having to step back and not do... We're just having to step back and not do what we had all very much wanted to do, which was to be that provider with our members throughout Rappahannock County, of all of our counties, as we go forward. Unfortunately, we're going to still try to do that, but not as being the actual in retail provider that we hope. Next slide, please. That concludes the information. Unfortunately, it's not, it's not the message I wanted to be able to bring to you all, to look to me forward to this conversation, since we really internally made the decision to move forward, to looking forward to this type of conversation with the kind of folks there in Rappahannock and our many other counties. We wanted to be that provider. Unfortunately, a lawsuit was not something that we anticipated and we're not, there's no way we should know exactly how that's going to end. There's no way for us to know when that's going to end. It's something that we're going to have to dedicate, continue to dedicate time and resources to defend ourselves going forward. So Chairman Donae, Mr. Curry, that concludes my presentation. I'll open it up to any questions that you all have or may might have at this point.
Thank you for the presentation, Mark. And I'll look to my board members to see if anybody has questions for Rappahannock Electric I'm not seeing any. I'm wondering if, I think the ARDOF is annual. If you get past this potential legal issue, is there any idea if you will actually go into the ARDOF auction next year?
The ARDOF auction is not an annual activity. It, that does not mean that there would not be another similar FCC type of auction called something else down the road. Prior to ARDOF, there was Connect America Fund II Auction, the CAF II Auction. I think, Ms. Donae, to be honest with you, they did not award out as much money to ARDOF as they were anticipating. I, it, there's still a huge problem, not just here in Virginia, but a huge problem across the US. The ARDOF auction in and of itself is not going to solve that totally. It's not going to come close to solving it totally. I fully expect some other type of federal grants program, maybe ARDOF II or something along those lines to be announced, particularly with the new administration that's now in Washington. And a problem that's not going away, it still exists, it's going to still require solutions and dollars, and I believe it's going to require not only from the private sector, across all of the sectors, including our federal government. So I don't know if it'll be ARDOF II. I don't know if it's going to be called something completely different. And I don't know the time frame on it, but I would expect to see something that'll still come down the pipe at some point. Rappahannock is focused on our broadband, excuse me, our fiber utility network project and our lawsuit right now. But that does not mean that we won't revisit again as this goes forward. And we'll have, again, infrastructure in place to leverage, not only tomorrow, but a year after that and a year after that.
Quick question, if that's all right. Mr. See, what is the REC's thought regarding your continued ability to lease extra strands of fiber that you're putting up for your electric business case as it relates to this lawsuit?
It's a great question. So there's no argument that the cooperative has every right to build, or let's say add fiber optic cable to our existing infrastructure without easements to serve the pure needs of the cooperative, you know, to do all the things that we talked in Rappahannock about before sometime, increase our efficiency to bond to outlets, et cetera, et cetera. If we start to have conversations with, let's say, an outside third party that is interested in working in very specific areas, what we would then need to do to look that forward is to build in the time and expense of securing easements for wherever that would be. So we would take the approach for now to continue moving forward on a broadband project without easements. But as we start, and hopefully that's going to happen sooner than later, we're starting to have conversations with providers who do want to enter in that business and would like to use our infrastructure. Where that touches property owners going forward, we would endeavor to secure those easements and while this lawsuit, if, assuming the lawsuit is continuing, that's not resolved.
Thank you.
If it does resolve, then we can move forward like we were. But if not, then we will have no choice but to go ahead and secure the easements as we go along for wherever that touches our land or our property.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wondered, we identified the one entity that received ARDOF funding as SpaceX, but the other entity was listed as, I think, Shenandoah Cable.
Chantel.
Is that, I was going to say, is that the same as Chantel Sprint, that whole network?
And we have, we have spoken with them, and I'm sure we will again.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Say.
My only question, this is Karen Whitson. My only question is, what's the current timeline for, just thinking about REC and your expanded fiber backbone for your own purposes? What's the timeline for that moving into our area?
We should be within the Rappahannock County area within the next, about the next year and a half. As we start, we will be focused in a number of areas actually. We have been, we have slowed down throughout 2020 as we, as we tried to focus purely on making sure that the power stayed on at all times.
Right.
With COVID, we greatly reduced and we focused our workforce to make sure we prepared essentials. At the same time, it was easily justified because we were moving rapidly down the ARDOF, retail broadband provider route, knowing that when we emerged from that, we would have to actively engage, again, keeping with the FCC's requirements on bill compliance. We couldn't make this up. This had to be 110% effort the entire time. So we would have to automatically engage a number of outside third parties. We have restarted that entire process at this point. So our schedule is somewhat being moved around a little bit. Our leadership has made it very, very clear that we're going to stick to our original five and a half, six-year bin open, but we get back on track by using third parties to join in supplement, greatly take over the construction process for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I could, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Ron Fraser, Jackson District, Amesville area. So am I to assume that what they're, the line that they're rebuilding right there in my district, you're not stringing the fiber because of this lawsuit?
Ms. Fraser, I'd have to, I'm not exactly sure which segment that is. Mark, are you familiar with that section?
No, no, but we can certainly check into it.
Yes, we can let you know.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right. I really appreciate both your time being with us today. Definitely not the message the broadband committee had wanted to hear or any probably citizen sitting and listening, but the lawsuit, I think, surprised a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Is Teresa on?
Yes, and just to be clear, the presentation next on the agenda from the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, I did speak with Ms. Bowlin Wilson this morning. She is requested to defer to a later meeting when she could be here.
Thank you. Next is number, well, Businesses of Rappahannock Cares Act update. I believe Ms. Woods is on Zoom.
I've just asked Ms. Wood to unmute, and she is unmuted.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Curry, and you know, Teresa Wood. I reside in the Hampton District, and today I'm speaking to you as the President of Businesses of Rappahannock. Thank you for allowing this opportunity. The purpose of my presentation today is to update you on our successful execution of the Rappahannock Cares Small Business Grant Program. Mr. Curry, I did send a presentation today. Did you receive it?
Unfortunately, did not get that up, but I might be able to hear that. You can.
Okay. I can just start talking through it, because it wasn't nearly as beautiful as the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative presentations that's fine. Just to review what we all know, or did know about the Rappahannock Cares Grant Program, this is the Rappahannock with financial support from Rappahannock County Government Cares Act Fund, implemented a $90,000 small business grant program to assist local businesses who sustain documented financial loss due to COVID-19 or who had documented COVID-19-related expenses. The program, which was called Rappahannock Cares, was open to all for-profit and nonprofit Rappahannock County businesses. The Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors directed $30,000 to be set aside for nonprofit grant awards, with remaining $60,000 to be awarded to for-profit businesses. As you all know, oh, thank you, thank you very much. Let's see if you can go to the next slide, please. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. As you all know, we had two partners in this project, because all we wanted to do was to stay in the background and make sure that the money got to the business community. So we partnered with Rappahannock Broadband Regional Commission and Community Investment Cooperative. They were both partners in this program. CIC exclusively handles the application process, working directly with applicants to answer questions and obtain their documentation. RCC was responsible, RRRC, excuse me, was responsible for the distribution of the Cares Act dollars, and they actually was the check to make sure that everyone received their award. Next slide, please. Again, just to review, in order to be eligible for grants, the business had to prove that they either had a loss of revenue of at least 25%, or they could show documents that COVID-19-related expenses, such as PPE, e-commerce, that sort of stuff. Applications are accepted from for-profit and nonprofit corporations, and they had to be established businesses at local locations in Rappahannock County, had less than 50 full-time employees, had been in operation for one year, and be current on all their taxes, or their taxes, current taxes. Next slide, please. Again, just to recap, these were the amounts that various businesses were entitled for based on the size, or the number of employees, rather. Next slide, please. This is an abbreviated timeline. The grant program opened on October 5th and closed on October 19th. On the 2nd of November, awardees were notified. W9s were collected, or the initiation, collection was initiated for the W9, and then final paperwork process began. On December 7th, all paperwork was finalized and the last batch of checks were mailed to the awardees from RRRC. Next slide, please. So this is the award breakdown. And as you can see, we had 21 applications submitted. Those were completed. Some folks did start applications and not complete them on the website, or the portal, rather. Of the 21 that were completed and submitted, 20 were approved. One retail application was denied because that business could not demonstrate a 25% loss of revenue. Of the 20, applications approved and two were awarded. 14 were for-profit awards. Of those 14, you can see the breakdown there. One was in the arts, one was in the food service industry, two in lodging, two in retail, and eight in the service industry. And then on the nonprofit award side, we had six awards there. We had three in the education sector, one in animal, I didn't really know what it's called out, but animal welfare, one in the arts, and one related to nature. Just so that everyone is clear and we are completely transparent, no members of Businesses of Rappahannock Board of Directors, nor any of the members of the Board of Supervisors received funds under this program. Next slide, please. This slide entitled the Need Succeeded to Funding, because while we had a substantial amount of money, it became clear from the applications that were submitted that the need was greater than what we had available for funding. So what was decided to be fair at the recommendation of CIC, and I had presented previously, they handled a new program of Cares Act funds distributed to small businesses. And so their suggestion was to reduce the award amount across the board by a percentage. And since we had two buckets of money, one for-profit, which was $60,000, and one nonprofit, $30,000, the individual buckets were adjusted accordingly. So the non, or the for-profit awards were reduced by 13.5%, and that's around it for first to this slide. And then the nonprofit awards were reduced by 20.3% across the board. Next slide, please. The award range, just for general purposes and information, so you can get an idea of what was given, for for-profit awards, they ranged from $38.98 to $43.16. And on the nonprofit side, $27.25 to $11,958. Next slide, please. This is just a recap of Businesses of Rappahannock contributions to the program. When we realized there wasn't going to be enough money to give up if the award was the businesses qualified for, we decided that we would fund a small portion of the program. So from our general fund, we paid $4,500 administrative fee to CIC. We paid the program advertising to RAP2 and to MadRAP, and administrative fee to RRRC of $450 for a total contribution of $6,300. That doesn't include the volunteer hours, but we were most certainly happy to do the program. It was very successful. The awardees that I have spoken with, which would be all of them, are delighted to have the funds. They all had a requirement to spend them by December 30th, which they did, and acknowledge that they did. And their grant proceeds could be spent on things such as rent and mortgage, insurance, payroll, equipment, utilities, and other business critical operating expenses, that is e-commerce, adaptive costs, equipment or website creation, upgrading and online presence, those sort of things. So in closing, I would just like to say thank you very much. You can go to the next slide, please. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to get these funds into the hands of our local small businesses. They were very well received. The program went off very smoothly. Kudos to both CIC and RRRC. They both did a great job in administering the program. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to address those.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for Ms. Wood?
I mean, I think the slide, the way it discussed the payouts, I mean, it showed the shortfall of 20 to 25, or 20 to 50. of 20 to 25, or 20 to 15%, depending on if it was for-profit or nonprofit, but, I mean, the glass half full is that 80 to 85% managed to be met of the requests, depending on whether you're talking about for-profit or nonprofit.
Oh, absolutely. And that is just to clarify, the reason why I put that in there is simply to let you know, in case you hear from a business that there are awards, that they qualify for $5,000 based on, as an example, that they might have qualified for $5,000 based on the number of employees, and based on their ability to demonstrate a loss or an expense, that they qualify for $5,000. They would have instead received a reduced amount by that percentage, by 13.5%. So that's the only reason why. You know, we are absolutely ecstatic with the results, and very happy to have those dollars into the hands of small businesses. And thanks the board for entrusting us with that project. It was a good project, and very, very successful. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to Patrick Monty at RRRC, too. He's always so very willing to step into any role that we ask him to take on.
Teresa, it's, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
Kier Woodson. On the nonprofit side, it looks like you had an outlier on the high end. Any additional explanation you could provide for the larger amount that was granted?
Sure, absolutely, good question. So as we saw on one of the earlier slides, the award amounts were based on, the maximum amount was based on the number of employees. So if we were to go back to that, let's just say that they had employees up to 25, for example, then they could receive up to $15,000 if they provided the documentation that's necessary for those funds. And so that's why we had one outlier in there who had more employees than most in the county. If that answers your question.
Yep.
Anything else?
I would just like to thank Ms. Wood and Business Rappahannock. That's a lot of work that they did in coordinating everything with CIC and RRRC, that if they weren't at the table and the board wanted to do that, would have fallen to staff to find time to fit that in with everything else. And so I'm very personally appreciative of the work that Ms. Wood did.
Thank you very much.
Is the, what I'm trying to think of what it is, the promotion campaign still on schedule for the spring that you all are planning to launch? And would you be willing to rejoin us and debut that when it's ready?
Absolutely. That is still slated for spring, of course. The money has been spent as it seemed it to be, but we will have our real kickoff in March, assuming that thing continues to go in the right direction with COVID. That's always the caveat there. But yes, that is all progressing nicely, and I will definitely provide you a report as we get closer to that launch date. And then after the campaign launches, we will have the transplant data for you that will be captured through social media outlets, and also through a landing page to see exactly what it responds to.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you very much for all your efforts.
It's my pleasure, and thank you again for entrusting us with these funds. And that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Service Reliability. We met there past 3:30, so I don't know who you have on Zoom.
I see Oliver Price listed, and Oliver will have to let us know who else I should unmute if there is anybody else. Oliver, you should be unmuted now.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Eddie Calliff is available. All night is calling. You can't hear me? Oh, okay. Okay. Eddie is Eddie on the call that I can see, listen.
I've just asked Eddie to unmute.
Can he hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our phone line, so Eddie will, will read you out.
I'm not even actually formally putting anything together, because I'm not completely sure what you're looking for, but if you can let me know, I can figure, give you some information on any address we have for something. Is it just one area we're looking for now, the Rockneals area up in that way?
Yeah, I mean, and Ms. Smith, I think you and I both have addressed various constituent concerns about reliability, starting roughly in mid-December. It seems like there's been a spate of outages, and it seemed sort of atypical, given all the tree work you've been doing with the ash trees and whatnot. And I, this is Kier Woodson, by the way, and I did have communication with Mr. Price about some of these outages. So I think it would be helpful just to understand what has been happening, why it seems there have been more outages since the mid-December timeframe, and just bring us up to date on sort of your system's stability within Rappahannock County, if you could.
Okay. Because we did start having some issues. We had a major storm, ice, major ice and snow storm, that was back on the six kings in that, in that area. That were 170 people that all, are pretty hard to find, and that is, you can see the ice and snow, pine trees. I mean, that is a, it's pretty rare, but still is. It's, we don't have been that long, but there were people all three, four days that going in the storm. And then on Christmas Eve, we had a long, pretty much, pretty much impacted everybody up there, and that was some pretty bad weather, flooding rains. We have a line that runs from O'Bankham Mill Road over to Old Stillhouse Road, and by halfway through there, our land crosses that Ace River twice. And the river's flooded, it washed out a tree, tree fell on the line from the land down. So it was completely in the south. So crews had to get in there and follow, try to find it, walk to find it. One from one side, on one side of the river, some from the other side of the river. And that's, that's why it took so long. And, you know, and again, it was well governed. And, you know, hopefully we won't have too many floods, but there was a 10-minute supply outage on early Christmas Eve morning. That was first envy, Circus Prairieville Substation, they had an operation on their transmission line, they closed that out. And then there was another one on the 7th that was caused by the mort, couldn't say the contractors that, what the contractor's been working on that line, and that is a reliable project that they're working on, deep end road. That's been addressed, and hopefully, all these projects, we have one project in that area in the work length of this year, to address all the problems we, you know, we know this, this truck, this truck area, it's filled, filled with trees, and we've got a lot of trees, but we live a lot behind it, so we can't come all. And what we did have a project was all the 7.9 north over, all the way over five forks, and we'll go back down to Spirit of Pike, 522. And one we're going, Newtown Road goes all the way out to 11, and that will give us plenty of feed into that area that should certainly improve, that is not the number of hours of preparation that happens. We are going to actually take a look up there next week, and hopefully it's, no, after the name wants to retrieve them. But the majority of the problems up there, I'm now a free lady. But we are certainly trying to improve.
Is your, thank you very much for that summary. It sounds like a spate of unrelated system failures and tree-related problems. Is the ash tree removal effort still ongoing, or has that concluded? Should we, should we expect to continue to see your contractor in our area? Or are you?
It is still ongoing, yes. We should continue to see crews as needed to get to remove the ash trees, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
When the, when the helicopter come in to do the trimming, we raised a few pounds from that because it's difficult for the helicopter to guide the trees where it evolved, so to say, and hold the trees in. So, but we'll have crews on site, direct.
Yes, we will send a notification before we come through with help there.
Didn't even know they did that.
Do you offer ride-alongs?
Not much.
Sign us all up.
So how is a, how is a helicopter going to saw down a tree, I'm wondering?
They don't, they don't saw them down. They just, they're not going to get that ash tree, because they're going to just try to find it. And they saw many trees, but no, they don't actually cut a tree down.
All right. Thank you very much for being on the call today with us. And as always, we really appreciate having our electricity be reliable.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If everyone's okay, we'll go into appointments. We have the Library Board of Trustees, and for some reason, I can't pull up the link. It says join the meeting or something. You do, okay. Didn't want to join on Zoom. We have, I believe, how many applicants?
There are three vacancies and seven applicants.
And is it correct that two of the applicants are already on the board? Is that?
Two applicants were most recently seated. They filled partial terms, unexpired terms, and that is Ms. Schumate, who you heard mentioned earlier, and Ms. Sidrow. You have in the audience here, Mr. Timberlake. I don't know that I would recognize necessarily the others.
Dr. Bernie is here.
Recognize everybody else.
Dr. Bernie.
Dr. Bernie is here, okay. And Ms. Peterson was on Zoom earlier, but she informed me previously that she had a conflict later in the day with another meeting, wasn't able to be here. I see of the other candidates online, I see, let's see.
I see, I see a Randy. I don't know if that's Ms. Schumate or not.
Yeah, that's Randy, I have an eye. Ms. Sidrow is online. There's a telephone caller online, can't say who that is. But you can ask them to raise their hand if you want to address them. I informed all the applicants that the board did want to have them available at this meeting, either in present or via Zoom, and of that, I've only heard from Ms. Peterson that she had a conflict.
Well, I'm wondering if it makes sense to go ahead and reappoint the two that are already on the board, rather than pull them off and put somebody else on. I was just wondering what the other board members thought about that idea.
I'd, I'd definitely, I'd support that, if you wanted.
Are we going to hear from the applicants?
Sure.
It's up to you, are there other written answers?
I mean, I just think we, I mean, we've been in this meeting for two hours, and I think, don't we normally hear from people when they apply for positions?
Sometimes.
I mean, if we have specific questions, I would definitely think the folks that are either in the room or on Zoom can answer our questions. Is it best just to go through alphabetical order based on?
However you would like to.
It looks like if everyone's in agreement, I've got Terry Sidrow. Did you say we do have or don't?
She is on Zoom.
Okay. Let's unmute her, and the board can ask questions as they see fit.
But Terry, you should be unmuted.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific, what can I just do?
So good question. Thank you very much for filling out the questionnaire. Any board member that has a specific question, please speak up.
I don't, I don't have any specific questions, but I just recollect that we normally, don't we normally give applicants a chance to speak to the board?
You do have a policy that addresses the appointment selection. It does not include anything specifically relative to members presenting on their own behalf. If that's happened in the past, it's been probably informal, but certainly a pleasure of the board.
Ms. Sidrow, since we have you on the Zoom and we can hear you, is there anything you'd like to add to your application, something?
No, I don't think so. I have very much enjoyed serving on the library board, and if you think it would be an advantage to our community, we continue, that would be great. If you think there's more advantage to filling that seat with someone else, then that's fine, too. I'm just very, very happy with our library, our team, and I'm excited about our future.
And how long have you been on the board at this point?
Very, how long is it been? A year and a half or more? Isn't that, isn't that exactly true?
About, about that, yeah.
Okay. And you do wish to, you would like to stay on the board?
That is entirely up to you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. Looks like we have Ms. Peterson.
Ms. Peterson, yes, Ms. Peterson informed me earlier that she had a competing Zoom meeting that she needed to be on at 4 o'clock, and so we did have access to her earlier, but we've missed her now.
I am sorry about that. What's next? Mr. Timberlake? Timberlake?
He's right here.
Yes, sir.
Who's like me? May I say?
Sure, come on.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Ed Timberlake. I'm in the Hampton District, and my questions, the questions have been answered to the best of my ability. I'd like to leave you with one intangible. It's not a life story, but I was a Navy junior. My dad was one of the first pioneers of the new Navy program, so I lived in 13 different places in America in my youth. I made a beeline to the library once I learned how to read, and every library told me something about the community that we had moved into. And consequently, I lived in Rappahannock the longest of any place in my life. In the year 2000, I bought property in the Grigsby to build a cattle farm, went hand to hand with Virginia Pine and succeeded. And the bottom line was, in that year, I went right to the library. And from that moment on, I never had a bad experience in your library. The people that I interacted with, and I write books, so I donated some, but everybody I interacted with had been so pleasant, so nice, so helpful, so inviting. So I just wanted to leave you with the intangible, that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. That library staff is just the best I've ever seen. I have some experience with seven different states, so thank you so much for any consideration. Win, lose, or draw, you got a great team in that library. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not this time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Looks like Schumate.
There is one telephone caller on Zoom who I can't identify. If you are a candidate and you're on telephone, plus press star nine, and that will raise your hand, and I will know that.
All right. Yes, no?
I would suggest move on to Dr. Bernie while he's here.
Yeah, I spoke to the red shoe as far as prior to making my call. She's having difficulty getting on the line. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kalin? No? Ms. Welch?
I believe I saw Ms. Welch connected earlier in the meeting, but I don't see her connected now.
Okay. And Mr. Bernie?
Doctor. I would say libraries used to be about books and today they're about so much more. I know you're expecting a survey of county residents about what they want in the library. That's something you should do, but I think you also need to do it from the other direction. Amanda talked about visiting other libraries and there are so many other opportunities that people in this county don't really know about, that we ought to go look at other libraries and bring back to the residents to say, hey, we saw this neat thing in. And wouldn't you like to do that here?
Thank you, Dr. Bernie. Any questions? All right. What is the best, most efficient way to do this, since we need to fill multiple positions?
Well, you can make one motion, three motions, two motions, any number of motions if they're failed motions.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we reappoint Randy Schumate to the library board.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just to be clear, this is a four-year term.
Four-year.
I would like to place a motion in the name of Mr. Terry Sidrow for reappointment.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right.
And then I would like to make a motion that we appoint Patty Peterson to the library board. I'm very sorry that she was not able to join us today, but I know she is very interested in filling that vacancy. And we only have one representative from the Puymont District currently on the library board.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
In speaking with Ms. Peterson, I found that she was the president of the university that is 10 miles away from where I went to school, which is a very far distance from here. It's a small world.
You should have told us that before we voted here.
Never know how that might color vote.
Thank you to all the applicants.
Thank you, everyone. All right. We are moving on to the appointment for the Planning Commission Hampton District. Mr. Whitson?
This is a very easy motion to make. I'd like to go ahead and move that we reappoint Alvin Henry of the Hampton District to the Hampton District seat on the Planning Commission.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all your hard work on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, you beat out all the competition. Way to go. Scared off all the competition.
Yep, yep. All right. Let's see, I've got old business. Can we take a five-minute break before we go to old business?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you so much.
I don't want to be caught with food in my mouth.
I said, I don't want to take all the love here. I said, I'm going to make some more. They're good.
They're finally going to eat these, right?
It's short, they're all pretty short-lived.
Oh, they're really good.
They're not gluten-free, that matters.
These are gluten-free?
They're not.
Okay, got it. Some more. Oh, okay.
Although from my science class.
In terms of paper.
Translucent.
The first item is preliminary budget discussion. This is basically making sure that we have our dates on the calendar. And any conversations you want to give Mr. Curry a heads up on today at this time would be good for budget concerns or direction.
I would also specifically like to know if there are any particular topics you would like me to research or plan relative to your joint meeting with school board coming up on February 9th. Dr. Grimsley and I are working on that agenda. She's already passed me a few items. And I just want to make sure if there's anything in particular that the board wants to bring up during that meeting, I can place it on the agenda and be prepared.
I thought the format we used last year worked out pretty well. If we could follow a similar format to that, that should be helpful. But in terms of topics to keep an eye on this discussion cycle, I think the one this weekend that I had sent the email about is of foremost importance to me, which is if there are changes we can change, if there are changes we can make to the monies we collect from lodging or meals taxes, if there's a way to increase those so they're paid largely by visitors, especially the lodging tax, to avoid any kind of tax increases for citizens of Rappahannock County. I'd like to know what those options are and what we need to do relative to making those changes.
It would certainly be helpful for me to know the board's general prerogative on that as I work on a balanced budget to present to you. The General Assembly did take action last year that increases your opportunity relative to the rates that you're allowed to levy. The meals tax, prepared food tax, was capped at 4%. It's now capped at 6%. So you, you could push that rate up a little bit. And then for the lodging tax, that was capped at 2% unless you were specifically listed in code. That has been changed now. So now you can charge 2% and then you can add another 3% that must be dedicated to tourism. In the past, that it would be dedicated to tourism, but you'd have to have special permission. But now that special permission's not required. And then above 5%, then it can be used for any purpose. So the first 2% and any percent above 5% can be used for any purpose. 3, 4, and 5% in the middle must be dedicated to tourism.
Boy, let's, so I've got something to say about all of this. I do know that they are counties and that collect the tax from Airbnb, you know, directly from Airbnb. In other words, when they, people get a place to stay and they send the money to Airbnb and then Airbnb sends it to the homeowner. And, but there are places where they will send it right straight to the county. And if we could arrange that, I think that would be beneficial, especially since there are people that advertise on Airbnb that do not have Airbnb, or they do not have a permit from the county to do that. At least we'd collect that amount. That's one thing. The other thing is, and I've got really no problem with going up on the lodging tax, but the food tax, you know, yeah, some tourists come in to eat, but you know, so do we here. And it's, you know, it's already pretty expensive. And I would be hesitant to raise the, the food tax in the county.
Well, I do agree with that, Mr. Parrish. And I was trying to remember the exact breakout. And I think to combine, they equal about $300,000 in revenue on an annual basis. And I think the lodging tax standalone is about $80,000 to $90,000. And the other 200 is, is meals.
And that the tourist home, the tourist home portion of the lodging tax revenue amount is almost immaterial. Last I heard, it was probably $15,000 or something. I haven't, I haven't seen new numbers on that, but.
15 is what?
Uh, tourist home, like Airbnb type revenue, the revenue out of all of our tourist homes is almost nothing. I mean, I agree with you that if we can take any action on cost savings or other tourism-related tax increases to, to protect our citizens, it's great. A penny real property increase, we're talking about $150,000 in additional revenue for the bottom line. So I think we keep that number in mind and then try to maybe model what, what an increase on, on meals or lodging would look like without committing to anything. Because, I mean, I agree that, I mean, that should be our first goal, is to protect our citizens. And if we can do it in a balanced way that actually meaningfully walls off the need for a real property tax increase.
I wonder if there's a way to almost reverse engineer the amount we should increase the lodging tax by figuring out, you know, what we can pay with, with those dedicated funds over 2%.
Yeah.
Kind of marry it up that way and then institute an increase. And then we know the $80,000 we're getting already from that 2%, we can, you know, use for general purposes. And then any increase over that, we can use, we can use specifically for the tourism initiatives that we would, we would already be funding.
So on the lodging, from Mr. Curry, am I correct in understanding that in order to put anything into our general fund, we'd have to hit 6%, right?
Correct. Anything more.
Yeah.
And there's a complicating factor that only Madison and Rappahannock County have the right to tax a combined rate currently equal to 4% on B&Bs because it's hard to separate the lodging part and the food part. That's capped at 4% in state code, but there's a technical amendment going through this year that may change that to align with the rates that are charged in the other categories.
And what's the mechanism for, for hearing from, in particular, lodging business owners? If we were talking about such a substantial increase, would this be subject to a public hearing requirement?
Yes, these rates are set by ordinance. And so just like any other tax rates set by ordinance, you'll have to have an ordinance amendment, public hearing, which is similar to what you do when you change your tax rates during the budget process. If this was needed to balance a budget, you would probably hold that public hearing the same time you hold the budget public hearing.
And then would it be helpful to send a letter from the chairman of the board to our state senator and delegate regarding the House bill that takes away that cap on Airbnb's currently?
It probably couldn't hurt. It has sailed through the Senate side unopposed, but Delegate Weber should definitely know that we support it. So when it shows up across over, because it's not a companion bill, that he knows your position.
Well, and I would make a motion that we, that we craft a letter for those purposes and that it be signed and sent by the chairman of the board.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those.
Wait a minute. Tell me, tell me again what this letter is.
For the cap that's currently in place, it only affects Rappahannock and Madison Counties. It's a House bill.
Just.
Just an endorsement that it is sailing through. It's just a cleanup bill. But I still think we ought to say we want it.
Okay. I agree.
Definitely doesn't hurt.
Thank you.
All right. Any more discussion?
I just had a question, a favor to ask Mr. Curry if I could, to make your job a little easier, maybe, if it's possible. If you find a link that would give us direct access to the budget negotiations and construction process so that we could just follow along and then you wouldn't have to, you know.
You mean a link?
To the General Assembly?
Oh, yeah, there is such a link that is not easily digested. But I'd be happy to send you a couple of links and some guidance.
Yeah, I could, you know, look at it when I have trouble sleeping or something.
Yes.
Thank you.
Close discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I wanted to go back quickly. Mr. Parrish's point about remitting the system for Airbnb-type property owners to remit their revenue back to the county. My understanding was that, as you described, Airbnb itself, if they're managing property, would remit that tax revenue back to the county. But then you also have a second category of tourist homeowners who operate.
ERBO or whatever.
Right, through some other means. Am I correct that those property owners, the ownership on them to remit tax revenue and the special use permit that applies to their property basically gives the Commissioner of Revenue knowledge of who should be paying?
Yeah, our Commissioner of Revenue's office actually searches the prominent rental systems for Rappahannock County properties. And if they don't have permits in place, they get nice letters suggesting that they get permits in place. And if they, if that nice letter doesn't work, then they get less nice letters. And if that doesn't work, then Mr. Goff gets involved.
I said, ask him.
Yeah. So we do a pretty good job, although I did make a note, I'll speak with the Commissioner of Revenue and see if there are more convenient ways that we can tie into that, some of those systems, Airbnb or whichever, to see if we can get direct revenue.
Mr. Parrish, what was your suggestion? You were suggesting an area for improvement. I thought when you were talking about how, how the tax money comes back, I thought you.
Yeah, I think the individual tourist home people send in quarterly, right?
Yes, right now, each provider, each owner would send.
Yeah, with their B&amp;B, they would send it, you know, every time that something was rented out. But we'd have, we'd have to get their cooperation, but I know other counties do that. So have that cooperation. So I think we should look into it.
And Ms. Graham may have looked into this and I just need to have that conversation.
I wonder if we could, maybe for our March meeting, not to muddy the waters too much, considering we're just getting into the budget season. But I think it would be helpful, since we're talking about lodging tax revenues, to maybe have Ms. Graham give us just a high-level update on where we stand, a number of properties. And I think importantly, how much revenue, tax revenue is actually being generated from these tourist homes. And we can sketch out sort of a list of priorities for her to cover. But I think it would be useful to hear from her directly. So we have a baseline for understanding what the tax increase would actually mean.
Now, one thing I've been asking about is getting a breakdown of CARES funding, where it came, how much came in and where it's distributed to. And I think citizens would most likely want to know that from a school board standpoint as well.
And unlike the county, the school board continues to receive CARES money. There are different programs that have been opened up, so.
If there's a way to present it in a clear way of funds coming in and where it's been distributed to, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think the school in particular, I mean, you, you basically have a, sort of a parallel reconciliation you need to do. They have their own stream of CARESAC money. And then we've also appropriated some. So it would be good to see a side-by-side of what went in and what went out and for what purpose. And to the extent any capital projects are still in process, it'd be good to see where they stand and how much more money is going into those. And then finally, we understand that it created a budget surplus from a school standpoint. It'd be good to see that number and where they ended up. I'd be happy to sketch that out for you.
One thing you can rest assured, that any dollars that are spent, any CARES dollars spent by the school are appropriated by the board before the school can spend it.
Right.
You just don't know exactly precisely what they spend them on. Although they have, in your partnership with the CARES dollars that came to the county and were then distributed, they have been very clear to you on what they've used it for. I would suggest this may be a good conversation for the joint meeting, but I wouldn't want to get bogged down too much in the rearview mirror around CARES. But it may affect the path forward with the continuing dollars.
Okay, well, let's figure out what's most efficient.
Are there any other specific items you would like me to work on relative to the joint meeting? That's not a loaded question.
Anyone else?
If I should think of anything else, I'll send an email.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go into the next item on the agenda, the Agenda Policy 820.
Madam Chairman, if I could make a suggestion, maybe we should proceed. Mayor Catlin's been waiting for us to do the post office update, which is not until two further items down. Perhaps we should amend the agenda so that we can do that discussion and he can be on his way. So the motion would be to make item I-1 the next item of business and then bump down items H2 and H3.
I'd be okay with that.
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, okay. Good idea. All right. So we're going down to new business, well, it'll come up actually, Washington Post Office Update. Thank you for coming, Mayor.
Oh, it's a pleasure to be with you. I am a teacher of small children, so I'm around three and four-foot-high Petri dishes all day. So I'm trying to keep my distance from everybody. It has been a long. It has been a long process with the post office and it's been very difficult for everyone. The people who have to use the post office in Sperryville, it has been very difficult and I appreciate that. We are slowly turning a corner and of course, the weather yesterday and today has added another week's delay likely, or if not more, to the process, but I did want to give you an update on what is going on, the trusses have been ordered. We have poured the footers, they have prepared the area for the pad to go in. About a week after the pad has been put in, which will allow it time to cure, then they will start doing the brick walls, building the walls for the building. So they had originally planned to have that happen around the 8th of February. That's going to be delayed at least a week or more because of the snow. The completion date is still May 1st for this contractor and then the postal service will have their people on site from April 1st on for their work. Again, that's the most recent schedule that I have gotten from them. The post office wants to be in by June 1st at the very latest, or be operating by June 1st at the very latest. At the same time, the plans that were put forth by the post office are very basic. The, for example, the rise of the roof is a 412 ratio, which is very plain, and asphalt shingle and everything basically at minimum standards. And so there is a task force working in the town to try to raise some private funds that would, if, that would go through the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, that if amenable with our Board of Directors would be used to raise the pitch of the roof to eight by 12 or eight 12 ratio and put a standing seam metal roof on the building. There'd also be a couple of other amenities to make it more attractive and fit in, since it is at the entryway to the town, it would make life, make the entryway more attractive. There's also funds that are being contributed in the same manner for extensive landscaping for the project. Should also mention, one last thing, that they were planning to dig the sewer lines on the 8th, which would be next Monday. That may be postponed now due to the weather. So I am happy to answer any questions, although I am not the contractor, but I can try to answer what little I can, since I'm trying to go by there at least once or twice every week.
Mr. Catlin, thanks a lot for spending so much time here. So my understanding is we will see a blue mail receptacle coming into the town imminently. And my understanding is one of your town council members, Jean Goodine, stepped up and offered her property at 353 Main Street for that receptacle.
And they chose that one?
Yeah, that's my understanding, so thank you for your help with that. And I think that'll take a little bit of pressure off at least, just gives people someplace to drop their mail. So that's approximately across from the Episcopal Church parking lot, next to Wine and Choc, Wine Loves Chocolate.
Right. And the Geneva Walsh jury.
Yeah, so I did send an email to the post minister, to the Washington Post Office as smart because she's coordinating the installation. My understanding is that application has been submitted for the blue receptacle. It's just a matter of getting it installed, so hopefully that'll happen imminently, but she didn't confirm the timeframe. But again, thank you and I also thanked Ms. Goodine over the weekend for stepping up in that regard.
And thank you for your time. Are there any other questions?
I guess I want to know from your perspective, Mayor Catlin, I mean, clearly you want to provide this essential service to the people of your town as quickly as possible. And I have to say, when it first came to Sperryville, I thought it was a good thing to have those folks coming through because it seemed like it wouldn't be for very long and it brings people into the village that maybe wouldn't normally come in and that maybe they would buy a cup of coffee or walk around while they were down there. But it's with the pandemic on top of it and people having to wait out in lines for their mail, especially now in the cold weather, it's just really a very difficult situation. And I'm sure we both feel it just in different ways. So from your perspective, are there places we can apply pressure to help meet these goals? Because we seem to keep missing deadlines and I just, I'm a big fan of the friendly letter.
Yeah.
And if there's things we can send to emphasize the importance of restoring these services, I think we need to do it sooner rather than later. I think we need to do it to our state senator, to our delegate, Senator Tim Kaine perhaps. I just think that any way to draw focus to this issue so that we can maybe start to meet these deadlines, we need to do it.
I very much appreciate the offer. There has been an enormous amount of pressure placed on the contractor from the postal service to, we did a pretty effective job, all of us in the community, not just the town, but everybody in the ZICO community, did a pretty effective job of putting pressure on the postal service earlier on in the process. And I think that at this point, all that's delaying us is not the earnest endeavor of the contractor, but the weather that we're facing at this point. The footers are in, the pad is ready for dry weather to be done. So we're trying very hard to get everything done. I have a feeling that at this point, sending a lot of political pressure will probably be more, cause more damage than good. My sense is that there are a lot of people who are involved in this project who are doing it because of the initial pressure and that if any more pressure comes, it would not be welcome and in fact, would be counterproductive.
Ms. Smith, one, I appreciate that idea a lot and one thing I should add is, and you and I were in communication about this, we did ask Mr. Holberg of the U.S. Postal Service, who's a marketing manager based out of Maryfield, I believe, if he could help us in three respects, one blue box, and they moved quickly on that and we appreciate that. Second would be to move the PO boxes that are burdening the Sperryville space now back in this direction and then third, perhaps pie in the sky, but some restoration of limited retail services closer to this part of the county. And I certainly have elderly constituents who are really worn out and I know folks in Sperryville are really worn out from the pressures that put on their small post office. So one possibility, given Mr. Catlin's political context he's just provided and so as not to do harm, would be perhaps a letter that would focus on really trying to bring in some temporary facilities during the interim period and that sort of de-locks the discussion from the completion of the existing project. And I'd be happy to take a crack at drafting such a letter because Mr. Holberg has been quite helpful and very responsive, but when we got to items two and three, that is a PO box move and retail services, there is definitely resistance. And I think we could at least apply some additional pressure. I'd like for him to come out here frankly and to see what's going on in Sperryville. I think that that's a pretty good illustration of what people are facing and now we're into the heart of winter. So perhaps we could direct the letter in that way as opposed to pushing for what it sounds like in Mr. Catlin's words, is a project that's almost there.
The one last thing I will add, which I forgot to add earlier, is that I understand that the director of the U.S. Postal Service gets a weekly update on the Washington Post Office. So it is at the forefront of their situation, but I think that idea is a good one.
Yeah, for me, it's not to say we don't want to see that completed as soon as possible.
Right.
But the separate question is how do we relieve pressure in the meantime? Because as you pointed out, the weather's now delaying you by several weeks at least and who knows what else might come along.
Right.
So it's really, my focus is on what can we do to just relieve some of the pressure from Sperryville and then accommodate people living in this area of the county.
Yeah, and I mean, who knows what kind of spring we're going to have. We could have, you know, weather delays for who knows how much longer. I hope we don't, but we conceivably could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just would rather take action now and feel like I took, you know, got in the driver's seat when I had the opportunity than be kicking myself three or four months down the road that we should have done something.
Yeah, and I think really if we could try to get some movement on something temporary, that would help a lot and that way it relieves the pressure on you all and you finish the project in the right way.
Right. But I think it would be helpful, I think, doing an invitation to Mr. Holberg to come see the Sperryville and what he will have to deal with there would be helpful.
Ms. Smith, I'll work on that letter with you if you'd like.
That would be great. I think we should do a letter, I think it should come from the chairman of the board with the county crest at the top of it, the county insignia, so that it's clear that this is an official letter from the Rappahannock County Board Supervisors that we're asking for action on this item.
And we have been in contact, Ms. May in the administrative's office has been in contact with Senator Kane's office. We've also reached out to Representative Good and then also within the state Delegate Weber and Senator Oganchain. So I think the letter could be addressed to Mr. Holberg and then all of the individuals just named will be copied on the letter. Let's see if we can get something temporary moved in.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
And I'll second it.
Quick.
It's a terrible sign of letter, you don't even have to do a word.
Did you get all that, Mr. Curry?
I understand the motion would be that the board would be empowering Mr. Whitson and Ms. Smith to prepare a letter for signature by the chair relative to PO boxes and retail establishment in the Washington area.
Yep.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was there a second?
Ms. Smith.
Okay, thank you. Appropriate.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sorry to keep you so long, thank you.
That's all right.
Thank you for that.
It's always good to hear your government and our government work.
Harry, if I am correct, we're going on to the whole business number two, recommended change to the supervisor meeting Agenda Policy 820. As far as I know, this is just a change of order so that presentations come after the adoption of the agenda, which would include the school report and then presentations so that public comment would come after those.
I made a recommendation at your last meeting, the board referred it to the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee reviewed it and I'll leave it to Rules Committee members to speak to it unless they would like me to do it. I've placed the updated version on the screen and is attached to the meeting materials with what the Rules Committee decided.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Curry. And Madam Chairman, this was something we did take up at the Rules Committee when we met the other Thursday and it did follow up on Mr. Curry's idea of how to reorganize the agenda so that presentations would sort of be in a more sensible place. So they would be right under the school report on the standing agenda and then the public comment would come after it and then as part of the consent agenda to sort of clean up the presentations that come after the consent agenda, that then action items as a result of the consent agenda would sort of be the final standing item on the consent agenda. And it seemed to be a sensible approach. If you have anything to add about it, Mr. Fraser, I think there was a consensus that there was, this was a good way to approach this.
I think you've captured it well, our discussions.
So is there any concerns or questions about it?
I just didn't quite catch the last point on the consent agenda that you said there's.
And I forgot my iPad today when I left, I'm so sorry, but when you go to the bottom of the consent agenda, there will be a standing last item on the consent agenda is actions as a result of adoption of the consent agenda.
I can read that wording if you'd like.
Thank you so much, Mr. Curry.
When resolutions of appreciation proclamations or similar are included on the consent agenda for approval, at the chair's discretion, they may be publicly presented immediately following the approval of the consent agenda. And that removes the issue of having the presentations before the consent agenda. So it seemed to put things out of order, but this would allow you to take care of that right after you adopt the consent agenda.
Okay.
So if it's the presentation that's just an informative presentation, we could have it before the consent agenda, but if it's a presentation of like a thank you for service or something we've all had to sign, then it would be presented at the end of the consent agenda.
Got it, so it's a bridge basically to what happens afterwards, okay. All right.
So I would make a motion that we adopt that change.
I'll second.
The motion and the second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, Buildings Assessment and Space Needs. Mr. Curry, who's best to?
We'll just say that the Building Committee met on January 22nd to review and consider a few items to include the discussion of the joint meeting between the Board Supervisors and the Building Committee. One of the outputs from that joint meeting was for Wiley Wilson to prepare a scope of work and fee proposal for some, a planning study. The Building Committee reviewed that document and made some recommended changes. The revised version as recommended by the Building Committee is attached and I'll hand it off to members of the Building Committee up there on the board to report beyond that.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as Mr. Curry stated, the Building Committee met and I think we had four members present and we did recommend unanimously that the board approved this work schedule and lump sum fee schedule that Wiley Wilson has proposed. I think it's far past time that this board start looking at ways to provide, you know, quality work area for our employees and for the county residents to be able to come to and have services provided. We don't provide many, but we don't provide them very good. And therefore, I would like to see as the board approve this recommendation.
So this is a recommendation to approve the $82,000 for this?
Yeah, I thought that was a big pill to swallow, but if you start looking at the breakdown of the hours and stuff, it may not be a very bad deal.
Is that a fee, that's a fee cap, it's not a fixed fee proposal, is that correct?
That's the lump sum, that's the fee proposal, I believe.
If I remember, the motion that passed at the Building Committee was up to $85,000, I think.
Oh yeah, you're correct, up to 85, but I think they're doing it for a lump sum of 82, so that should cover all the expenses.
Our contract with them would require billing over time based on completed work and this would be a not to exceed number if for some reason during the process that they did less work or we stopped the project, we wouldn't owe the full amount.
Are we able to stop the project at any time?
Yes.
So they can get started and they'd be working, then all of a sudden something falls in our lap and we say, well, we're not going to do that anyway, so we can just stop them.
I would imagine, yes, sir.
You can by your contract, but you would owe them the work that they've completed.
Right, right. And then is there going to be any comparison between what this is going to take as compared to fixing up our existing buildings?
Yes, part of the scope, there's a few different alternatives expressed here. It would be a conceptual planning study to build a new building on the back four acres or so that would include judicial needs, administrative needs, maybe only judicial needs, and then renovate those spaces here that have been freed up, like the courthouse and clerk's office, possibly the common attorney's office. So there's a whole matrix of potential outcomes and they'll come back and present multiple options for the board to review and how you like the outcome relative to functionality, relative to potential cost. And then you would, once you had your arms around which potential outcome you would like, then they would be retained presumably to get detailed plans for that particular option.
So the other question is, did we, and this is one company, did we approach any other company to give a bid or just? So the other question is, did we, and this is one company, did we approach any other company to give a bid or it's just, just the only one?
Well, so for professional services, we don't really bid. We use requests for proposals and review their ability to provide the work that we think that needs to be done. And so we negotiated the rates with this company when we went through that RFP process a year and a half ago and selected them based on their ability to do the work, their history of doing work on similar type projects. I actually have history with this company doing very similar work, space planning and courthouse work. So it was our determination at that time that this company is well positioned to do work for our size county, for our type of needs at reasonable prices and are capable. And so, once that step is done, then it's a function of negotiating how many hours it takes to get each scope of work done, which is where we are now.
So in your personal opinion, Mr. Curry, is this a good idea to go through with?
There are a million ways that you, we could try to solve our office-based issues that we have now and most importantly, our courthouse potential issues which could rear up at any time. We just don't know. So I think having a good planning study upfront to look at your different options positions the board well to move in multiple directions should you have to. We certainly want to find the one that is most functionally acceptable to us and is cost-effective as possible. And there's probably some mixture of those two things. And doing something like this will help get some more concrete answers to those questions rather than trying to guess right now. We all know that renting space probably isn't a great plan. But the numbers that come out of this might tell us that we can rent for a very, very long time. And that's the value of doing a study like this to really confirm those sort of things. I kind of doubt that it would make sense to rent for a long time, but you wouldn't know until you really have these numbers.
Yeah, so I know we've got this looming expense facing us, either remodeling or building and all that. And what I'm hoping is that by the time that we have to confront that, we will have paid off all our other debts and that we could go back and get another bond to pay for this, in which case, the timing was right. The taxpayer would never know the difference.
Yeah, we were coming close to where that timing would, would happen.
And so are we like three years away from that or?
Yeah, about that. And depending on when you enter the bond marker, when your first debt service is due. So it's, we're getting pretty close and we can, that's part of the work you can do to.
So we're gonna, we can handle an $85,000, I guess, expense, but these, to build a whole new building is gonna be, is there any idea what that would be?
Well, this study will help us understand that based on typical square foot costs. And then once, once we pick a pathway from there, then the estimates would get much more precise. But that's when we'll have to start looking at our financial planning, long-term planning, the debt service capacity and how it would affect your.
The reality is, I've complained ever since I first came on the board and we've spent over a million dollars just across the street renting.
Right.
And since we went month to month four years ago, we've spent almost a quarter of a million dollars there. So it doesn't make any sense to keep prolonging this. But by the time we would go through a process, as Mr. Curry just stated, we'll be a year and a half closer to that time period that you're referring to.
Right. Okay.
I had two questions about the proposal. One, it sounded, if I'm not mistaken, that the scope of services was to include what Mr. Parrish was just discussing, which is an assessment of other options, but just looking at the scope of services section on page one, it doesn't, it's certainly not explicit. It, I don't know what programming means. Second, conceptual design judicial administration facility suggests a focus almost solely on a new building. And I think Mr. Parrish raises a good point. We need options. And so I don't know if the scope of services has to be adjusted. And then my only, my only other question here is I wonder if they've offered billing rates for the individuals who would likely be involved in this assessment. And I wonder, instead of committing to a lump sum, essentially a fixed fee contract, if we might also along the lines of what Mr. Parrish said, who knows what might happen, but could they just bill us for time? I mean, is there some reason why we'd agree on the front end to paint a fixed fee lump sum amount as opposed to just paying invoices as we go with a fee cap in lieu of, in lieu of a fixed fee? In other words, we would not agree to be billed in excess of $82,000?
I'd take those two parts. So I guess it's page three of the scope gets into the details of the administrative facilities and it leads off by saying, there are two possible scenarios for administrative space on the courthouse grounds. One is to increase the size of a new judicial center to accommodate the administrative functions. The other is to repurpose existing buildings vacated when new judicial facility is occupied. So.
Okay. The summary upfront maybe is not as descriptive as it should be.
So relative to the, it's a, it is a lump sum. It's basically not to exceed price based on those unit rates to define our progression through the work. And they are required to provide what's in this letter to us at no more than the agreed to amount. If for whatever reason it takes them longer to do that, that's not our problem. If we were to try to move to a more of a, an actual hourly rate contract, they may, they may not price it exactly the same. So there's an appetite for risk on both of our parts. And I think this sort of model, which is used pretty regularly in the design world, serves to protect the interest of both parties.
The last question, has the county attorney had a chance to scrutinize this?
No, he reviewed and approved the contract.
Right.
I don't think he's reviewed this in particular, the scope. So the terms of the contract or the contract we already signed, this is appended to that and all the terms and conditions of who pays who when, what kind of insurance they need, who sues who where and when they can do that. That's all been decided.
So before we approve that, would it be prudent to have him look at the rest of it or?
It's really, this is a legislative decision for the board on what kind of work you want done.
Right.
He's already reviewed the, what are the rules of engagement as far as legally.
All right, I'm just getting nervous approving this kind of money.
Yeah, I understand.
And I do think, I want to say that, you know, I, I wouldn't like to spend, I don't want to spend this money if we don't have to. But I think we all know that at some point, some decisions will have to be made. And so when do we start planning so we have the best information at hand when it's time to make those decisions? I, I don't think we can continue to defer the planning and hope that we'll be able to make decisions. We have to do the planning so that we can make a decision, an informed decision when the time comes. And if we have to spend a little bit of money on the front end, hopefully it'll save us some money on the back end. And it will, like you said, Mr. Parrish, and we discussed this in the course of the building committee meeting. You know, hopefully everything will line up. We're in a position now where we can undertake the study. Rates to borrow are very low. Hopefully they continue to trend that way. We're paying off some bonds and debts and so that would put us in a good position if we do have to do something. I just hope and pray all those trends continue so that when the time, if or when the time comes, that we'll have this information at hand and be able to move forward with the information we need.
I do want to note, the recommended action is twofold. One, if the board is inclined to move forward with this project, to note that, but also to make clear that you're wanting to thaw a portion of your capital fund that's been set aside and frozen. You budgeted, I believe, $300,000 for building study purposes in your capital fund, but you froze it because of COVID. So that, some portion of that would be used for this project and you would have to take both actions today if you wanted to move forward.
And I don't want to, I don't want to be an obstructionist. I just don't know why we would agree. I'm, I agree with you. We gotta get planning. My only, my only concern is the fee structure. I don't know why we wouldn't request a fee cap and have them bill up to that cap. And we agree that we won't allow any billing beyond that fee cap and set the fee cap at what they've already set as a lump sum amount.
But that's basically what we have.
Well, it's not, because we're paying that no matter what. Under a fee cap arrangement, they could come in lower.
Yeah. That's not the contract we negotiated with them. So if we want to do that, I suppose we could try to negotiate a new contract. They may or may not be willing to do it. We could then talk to another company.
So, I just wanted to verify, I think I've already verified this. If they get started on this and then we decide, hey, never mind, you know, somebody, I mean, for example, let's just say the Black Hill project decides to build us a building for free, something like that, then we can like stop this, we can put the, just pull the plug and go away and don't pay anymore.
Yes, or more likely, we would, we would change the scope to fit whatever new reality happened. We may still have empty buildings that have to be considered and so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you're comfortable with it, Mr. Curry, I guess.
But under that scenario, if we, if we agree to a lump sum fee and then we end the project early, where does that put us?
We have the right to terminate, as do they, under certain circumstances. So if we have changed conditions, we can terminate and we owe them up to what they've completed.
So they're just billing us for actual hours up until that point?
Not on hours, but on work completed. So if they get behind the eight ball and spend a lot of hours and don't get a lot completed, we only pay them for what they completed.
How's that measured?
The one question that's not clear to me, did we ever find out what it would cost just to do the work on this building and make it up to code?
Oh, no. Two, two things. We have the envelope work and we're still working on getting design information from architectural mason firms and I don't have that yet.
Okay.
And roof. But that, the, the concept of trying to modify this building is not what's being recommended by the building committee.
After working at the U.S. Capitol and those associated buildings for a couple of years, you really don't want to see what that figure would be to bring this building up to code. This is, we're allowed to do what we do because we're grandfathered, which isn't exactly up to code. What I'd like to see us do is, is move into another building perhaps, because sooner or later, I think the court's gonna order it. As Mr. Goff can attest, he can't really do his job and the judges can't really do their job safely. Well, they have been able to do it safely, but there's probably always that fear out there that something could go wrong. So this building may be used for exactly what we're using it for today, county meetings. I, I can't really see this building being brought up to where it would be safe under most conditions to do their job.
Oh, so the new building's gonna be a courthouse also, right?
Yes, that's, that's the proposal for, Plan A and Plan B is to build a courthouse only with the other offices moved over there. Or we could do a Plan B, which would be like a basement that would be used for county offices as well, other county offices.
This is probably a good idea. I'm just wondering if we should stew on it just a little while longer.
Well, I wasn't involved in the project, but I knew a fellow that used to work with me in electrical trade. He, he had his own business by that time and he bid on the electrical work with the general contractor at Madison back in, I'm grasping here for dates, but I think it was around 2008 or so. And they had been ordered by the court to build a new courthouse. It may have been a little earlier than that. And the architectural firm that they had to go out and hire at that time told them to prepare for $6 million. So between what they squirreled away and what they had leveraged for financing, they were ready. And when the first bids came in, the lowest bid contractor, which my buddy was not associated with, was $8,900,000 for the combined new courthouse and remodeling their old courthouse for additional use. So they were scrambling to come up with 50% more money than they had prepared for. And remember, at that time, they were under a court order to build a new courthouse. And I, I just think that we don't want to get ourselves in that position. So this is, this is all preliminary work. I believe we can stop it if something else comes up that's a better deal for the taxpayer. But frankly, we've sat around doing nothing for so long that we're really good at it. And like, you know, my buddy, they didn't get the job. So that was quite a bit of work for, I think it was about eight or 10 contractors that bid on that job and the low bid came in almost 50% higher than what the architects had estimated.
It's scary with all the prices going up the way they are.
Yeah. Well, they needed a larger courthouse than we do, but I mean, they're twice the size of our population roughly and.
So is this amount of money gonna give us plans? Is this an architectural plan?
This is, this is a planning study. This is to help you decide which direction you want to go, give you general layouts. And from there, you would pay more for the detailed design to give to a contractor to build a building and site work.
Right. This is not construction documents.
I'm just playing the devil's advocate. Is this a, if this is a good idea to do, I mean, why wouldn't we take the $85,000 and give it to an architect and draw up the plans?
Well, they are architects and that's who would be working on it. It's because you.
Are they gonna give us the plans?
Eventually, they could do a future phase, but.
So all they're gonna do for this money is tell us if it's a good idea or not. And then we hire them or somebody to do the architecture.
They're gonna give you different building layouts, see if it fits on the property, how it would fit on the property, how the roads and utilities would have to fit and multiple options. And then from those options, the board could then select the path forward for the detail. You don't necessarily want to drive all the way through to the detail unless you're sure that's what you want to do.
I, so it's, you're saying it's too late without renegotiating the contract to change the fee structure, right?
Mr. Goff wanted to make clear that this proposal references our current arrangement with RACI Engineering, who's handling area surveying here. And that the work done by RACI would be provided over to this company as the basis for their work.
And my question, Mr. Curry, was you're saying that without going back to them, we couldn't provisionally proceed with this and then ask them the question whether they rework the fee structure? I just don't see why they would, why they would perceive a request for a fee cap, which I think protects taxpayers, because we're getting actual bills for actual time spent up until, up to a limit, why they would have a problem with that?
Yeah, I.
And frankly, if we do stop midstream, like Mr. Parrish suggested we might, I don't know how you bill or how you, how you proportionally bill for work completed when the fee arrangement is a lump sum arrangement. I just don't think it's a good idea in my opinion. But I'm not, again, I don't want to get in the way. I'm just wondering if we're being smart about the way the fee is structured.
All I can say is that I've worked on many projects with this sort of arrangement on both sides of the table in this field, but.
Okay.
I'm sure there are other ways it could be done.
So this is standard practice is what's presented, you know, per your experience, Mr. Curry?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, well, can we ask Mr. Glenn? He's on this committee, right?
Yes.
Can we ask him for any comments on this?
Sure. Mr. Glenn.
Oh, no, yeah. It's pretty clear that this building, well, it won't handle the current requirements, the new requirements. So unless you're willing to add on to this, you're pretty much committed to the new building. And I want to emphasize what Mr. Curry said, that this is about finding all the options and alternatives that are in front of this. It's a very complex situation with a bunch of buildings involved and a bunch of different requirements. And, you know, could you shoot from the hip and pick an answer and go straight to drawings? Yes. It's gonna cost you a lot more money and you're not gonna know if you pick the right one. So I think this is a, a good effort. And we also talked in there that there are intermittent reviews by the building committee to keep them on track. So, yeah, I, I versus, I was the one who made the motion, the building committee.
The only other option that you're still concerned is we could wait until the 15th and.
I don't, I don't want to.
What's he?
I don't want, Mr. Glenn, are you okay with the fee structure? Mr. Glenn, are you okay with the, the fee structure?
It's a different body.
In the sense that he's, he's right, that's the way you put the contract in place, all right? I have done it in both directions, all right? This one works as well as a time and material contract. This is better in the sense that it won't require as much oversight by Mr. Curry that you hear what your proposal will take. So if you do a time and material, keep that managed, you're going to add workload to Mr. Curry.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn.
So you need two motions?
One motion is fine, as long as it hits both.
I, I lost track. Did we ever make a motion? If not, I'll put this in the form of a motion that we approve it.
And I'll second that motion. I think there's two parts.
So the recommended action that I've listed, and you can tell me if this is a motion, is to award the agreement for judicial and administrative facility conceptual design services to Iowa Wilson and authorize thawing, and to authorize necessary funds by thawing them from the capital holding account to make them available for this purpose.
Is that what you wanted to say, Mr. Frasier?
Yeah, exactly. Word for word.
And I still second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Let's see, where are we? We did the update, Brag One and Brag Two settlement agreement?
Yes, I'll allow, if it's all right with you, Mr. Goff, to provide.
I need a, uh, motion to be approved that authorizes me to sign the settlement agreement in Brag One and for Mr. Mitchell to sign the settlement agreement and to final order in Brag Two, based on the settlement agreement that has been worked out with the plaintiff's counsel, Mr. Conick, which it leaves in your package.
Yes, sir.
If I could point out, I'm not really included under Mr. Mitchell, counsel for defendants, so there's, needs to be another line item.
I'm sorry, could we, sir?
I'm not included under the counsel for defendants in Brag Two, so there would have to be another line item.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You are representing yourself in that contract two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion would be also to have Mr. Frasier as a pro se defendant to sign off in Brag Two, which is, I think, something that Mr. Mitchell's office could easily accomplish. Secretary could just add that to the report.
Brag Two settlement amount is, is not county funds, it comes from the insurer, is that correct?
Yes, we're formally insured by VML, it's now VRSA, and it is their position, I mean, it's their money. It has nothing to do with taxpayer money other than, then, of course, the premiums that we once paid.
And to the extent that those two insurers might talk with one another, does a payout of this kind of settlement have any adverse effect possibly on our premiums under the new insurer?
I doubt.
It may actually be favorable.
Yeah, that's, this is a litigation cost settlement, so that's the hard time. It's the risk they take when they take this off.
Anyone ready to make that motion?
I, I would also ask that you make clear that it's acceptable to, for staff and treasurer's office to issue that check during a mid-month check run to meet the requirements of the agreement, which is five days after signed.
And both of these checks are made out to Marion Bragg?
They're generally made out to the plaintiff and their counsel jointly, but I understand Mr. Conick has requested that the insurance company check be made out to him, although apparently his client is overseas. But he has a power of attorney to sign it.
That's whoever the check is made out from the county to meet the timing of the agreement, it will need to be cut mid-month. So I'd need that authorized.
The agreement calls for five days after, after today, is what we did.
Oh, I think it's after it's signed, isn't it?
So she'll be made bragging in five days approval of this settlement by the board. So I think that, that, you're saying these need to be.
Well, but approval is signified by, signature by you.
Yeah, well, I guess I, I didn't read it that way, but okay. Well, Mr. Conick's going to accept a mid-month, right?
So the, uh.
I think you were stupid because it is five days.
So just to be clear, the $6,000 check on Brag One has already been made out to Marion Bragg, correct?
That check was issued and then voided.
And voided.
Because the case was appealed.
So are both of these checks going to be made out to David Conick, not Marion Bragg?
Well, we don't care who the check is made out to by VRSA. That's a separate agreement between Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Conick.
Right.
The only thing we need to concern ourselves with is who the check is made out to in our case. So, and, and as I understand it, that previous, we were ordered to pay Marion Bragg.
By the judge.
My advice was to Mr. Curry and to the treasurer.
Right.
That the check be made out to, to Mrs. Bragg. And then I'm told by Mr. Conick that he has a power of attorney to dispose of those funds according to their private agreement, which we have no reason to, to get into. So our check would be made out to Marion Bragg as the petitioner in Brag One case, and it would be cut mid-month and distributed to Mr. Conick as her counsel. Mr. Mitchell told me today on the phone that he has the check in hand to pay, made out to Mr. Conick from the insurance company now called PRSA.
I can understand the Brag Two one, but the Brag One, the judge awarded Marion Bragg the money.
Yes, sir, and that's mine.
And I would, I would, I would be more comfortable doing what the judge said to do.
That's what we did last time, that's what we're doing here.
Right, so I would say that we write the $6,000 check out to Marion Bragg from the county, because that's what the judge said to do.
That's my understanding of what.
Yep, we'll do that.
They're doing.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Remember, the motion would include that Mr. Frasier be added as a signature block as pro se in the Brag Two case.
So Mr. Goff to sign for Brag One, Mr. Mitchell to sign for Brag Two, and, and the order. And Mr. Frasier to sign for himself, and that the check from the county for $6,054 should be made out to Brag One during a mid-month check run.
Nobody else will all make that motion? If somebody would make a second, we can at least have discussion.
Second for discussion.
Thank you.
So being as, this is going to clear it all out, and there's no indication that any of the supervisors did anything wrong. And this will get all this behind us. And we're going to do what the judge said to do, which is pay Marion Bragg the $6,054. And the insurance company is going to settle with the attorney rather than go to court and have the expense to go to court. I suppose this is probably the simplest thing we can do to clear this out and, you know, move on.
Mr. Parrish, I don't know why you said it exactly the way you said it, but the court did find that this board violated parts of FOIA.
I think he's referring to the language of the settlement agreement.
That's not the way I heard it, but.
The, the settlement agreement really is for Brag Two, because Brag One was settled by the court, and the court did, did stipulate to this board, violated parts of FOIA. I mean, we can relive that all you want to, but.
Well, I don't care to, frankly, but.
But I, I, I would like to point out that I wasn't here at the February meeting last month because I spent, I mean, last year, because I spent all of that month ill, and I think it could have been settled then and saved the county about $50,000 in the process since, since that time. So this is another thing that we should have done a long time ago.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Preliminary discussion, Chapter One Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Curry, I think it would make sense if you speak to this one.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Goff and I discussed several months ago, that would be probably good for our ordinances to include a reference that identifies that any outdated references to the Code of Virginia would be deemed still valid, and just because we failed to see that the Code of Virginia changed a reference or changed the number, that shouldn't cause our ordinance to be invalid. We must follow state law anyway. We started to work on some language, and then before we got too far, decided to look out to see who else already had language, already adopted, identified the languages provided on the screen right now, which is, would be recommended to be added to Chapter One of our ordinance, which is basically general matters. And it, it states in name, Section 1-9, which would be the, it only goes through Section Eight now, Chapter One, "References to State Law, Amendments to State Law Incorporated. Whenever this code makes reference to any provision of state law or to a section or part of the state code, such reference shall be deemed to include all amendments and successor sections and parts of the state code so referenced, unless a contrary intention is clear. Whenever a state code, section, or part reference in this code is amended or reenacted, and such section or part is given a new number or name by the state, the reference in this code shall be deemed to be the new state number or name unless contrary intent is clear." I presented this to the Rules Committee on the 22nd as an addition to their agenda. They reviewed it and recommended moving it forward to the Board of Supervisors, which is why I placed it on your agenda today.
So eons ago, when we talked about the, what was it called, state requirement for, it's basically a remove, a state requirement that cell tower, cell tower contractors would be required to put down a bond for eventual removal of the tower. We found out when the applicant came in that that was no longer even a provision in state code, that our, our ordinance was out of step with state code. Would this protect against that kind of?
No, it's not intended to handle that. It's, it's really not quite as.
It's not substantive.
Several places in your May amendments that you'll hear tonight include references to Code of Virginia, Section 15.1. That was long ago, recodified to 15.2, I believe in 1990. So it would take care of those things. There's also references to certain sections of code relative to subdivision ordinance and the type of street, those sort of things.
But it's really non-substantive stuff.
No, it was basically just to keep us in line as the code changes. It's, it's a stopgap. We still want to modify our code and keep track of our code over time, and we aim to do that. But it's a good provision to have and other localities have it, referencing.
And then you get the litigation comes up, and they point to it and say, hey, look, there's a defect in your local ordinance, so you can't enforce it, because now instead of 15.1, it's 15.2, but the substance is still there.
Okay.
This saves that provision without us having to go through every time there's an enacted enrichment and, and, and it's safe, each and every single thing. Of course, that's the goal, but sometimes it doesn't happen.
Okay.
So it's a savings.
This is just similar to like the severability statement, correct?
That's right.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize staff to advertise a public hearing to amend Chapter One of the Rapid County Code to add Section 1-9 as it's presented here.
I'll second that. If we can make an amendment, I was going to get to under discussion.
Go ahead, we're in discussion.
Well, we were, we also discussed it under the Rules Committee, amending 30-4B to, the motion is to postpone or table would be voted on in the same manner as a motion to amend a motion, but the way that this is set up, each time that you have a motion, we have to deal with it individually. So those, those two should take precedent over something to amend a motion. That's, that's actually Robert's Rules of Order, that a motion to table would be a privileged motion, so we would want, I think, we should have done that the last time we worked on this, but somehow we failed to actually get the language in there just right. But a motion to postpone or table should, should be before any of the other motions to amend, because actually, we may want to postpone something before we work on amending the motion to begin with. It just makes sense that we would do it that way, since it's already worked out in Robert's Rules of Order that way. So basically, motions to postpone or table, this is a 30-4B, motions to postpone or table should be voted on the same manner, should actually read, shall take precedent on other motions, whether to amend a previous motion.
And we had discussed this at the Rules Committee too, and unanimously thought it was a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought my direction for there was to bring modification back to the Rules Committee, but if you can skip that step and come straight here and direct Mr..
Well, I think it's so, so easy, it, it really wouldn't have to tie you up any further, we could just do it now, because it's really, I think it's more a matter of housekeeping, because the way we're written now, we would actually have to go through a process, and we may be stuck in a process of trying to amend another motion, when actually, the consensus may be to just postpone something. And we could just, we could just, you know, take care of it right then and there by, with a motion to postpone or table.
My, my concern is that, just, I don't know the precise wording that I should prepare and, and have prepared relative to the advertisement for a public hearing, and if it's not exactly what you want when you hold your public hearing, we haven't gotten anywhere. So unless we can chisel out the exact language.
I could have it by tonight if you wanted to just table this until then.
What was the reason that we included these language that was? I remember writing it, and I don't know why.
Well, it's, it, I believe, and I'm trying to do this from memory, which I can tell you what I did with a bicycle when I was 12 and delivering papers better than I can tell you what we did a year ago, but I think it was because when we would have competing motions on the floor, we didn't know exactly how we would, we would handle it, but I really feel that this would clear up a matter, because we would still have to labor through a motion to amend when really, like I say, the consensus may actually be to, to just do short work of it and to table it until a later time, because we're missing information or whatever.
My second question is, wouldn't we need to amend this agenda to include that action item?
Probably.
I think we would, since there's no notice that we would be considering anything in Chapter 30 as of this agenda. I mean, you could, you could make a motion to make that amendment to the agenda. Again, here, again, we'll take the unanimous vote to make it an action item tonight. And we'd, you'd also have to see if this is that language. I, I think, Mr. Curry, I might be able to pull it off, but let's, I mean, I don't know how complicated or what the ramifications would be. This is the first I've heard of that.
Well, you might actually be correct on the order of motions today, but I, I just thought that if we were going to have a public hearing next month on amending the code, we could do it all at one time.
We have an upcoming meeting, right?
Yeah.
So could we, could we consider it the next meeting and then, and then include it in the same public hearing? Would that, would we have time to do that?
You mean, you mean on the ninth, the joint meeting with the school board?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it has to be two weeks in the paper, so it probably would be.
Yeah, this is only one advertisement. This is not.
No, it's two advertisements, but it just, you don't have to deal with the five and 21 days.
Okay, so we would get two Thursdays in?
I think so.
Would that give you a chance to then get it right, and then we just take action on this specific change?
That would also give us time to schedule the three-day FOIA notice, we could have another Rules Committee meeting.
That's correct.
So I guess I'm hearing you want to take care of Section 1-9 now, hold a Rules Committee meeting in the next week, possibly take action on 30-4 on February 9th. meeting in the next week, possibly take action on 30-4 on February 9th? And then have a public hearing in March for Chapter 1 and Chapter 30.
And that way, 30-4, you could work on the exact language and we don't have to rush it through tonight.
And the other one can go through whether we get it done on time or not.
Yep. So.
So we do have a motion. There's a motion and a second.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to close discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Emergency shelter upgrade assistance grant.
This is under new business because I'm asking you to approve an action that I took on Saturday. I felt comfortable taking that action based on previous discussion of this board, and that is to submit a grant for shelter upgrade assistance grant to add a generator to our primary shelter, which is the high school. We are led to believe that the cost share would be 87% state, 13% local. If we were fortunate to receive the grant, that would lead to approximately $32,000 local cost to add a generator that would power the entire building, which would be beneficial for many reasons to include sheltering.
Yes.
So I would just ask that you confirm the acceptability of that application. If you don't think it is acceptable, I will make the necessary contacts to withdraw it. But the deadline was today and I didn't think I'd be able to do it.
Well, as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I know this is something we've wrestled with for several years and we really do need to take action on it and to make sure that those facilities are suitable should we ever, should we ever need them. And so I would make a motion to endorse the actions that Mr. Curry has already taken so that we can move these projects forward.
I'll definitely second that one. Should we wait for Mr. Whitson? Probably not. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Whitson was absent for this one vote.
I do want to thank Dave Jurrel, who's been helping me on the side of a few projects as workers required, who helped me gather this application information together.
That's great, thank you.
That's wonderful.
So since Mr. Whitson is not here, could we appoint him to be like the clerk of the works over this project before award at the grant?
It would be, it would have to be unanimous, but does it?
Nice. All right, moving right along, Board Committee reports. If you all don't mind, I would like to ask Ms. Bond to come up. She's been so great being here all day, to just address the broadband committee and how she is feeling with the changes that will occur when the broadband authority meets.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, Margaret Bond for the broadband committee. I keep thinking this is going to be the last time that I speak to you and we keep having a few more following things, but what the committee has not met and taken, done any more business since the board authority was approved. But what we've been doing is trying to gather the bits and pieces of business that the committee has, was in process of concluding and make it a transition to the broadband authority. So I have provided some written comments here. The committee first considered sort of informally the response that REC gave us this afternoon and that it had not gone forward with the RDOF monies. And we realized that we'd already been working on a Plan B and we didn't count on having REC as a participant in the broadband plan to the extent that it would be a showstopper for business. So I just want to add that as another reassurance that what the committee is doing at this time is compiled a list of key documents that would be valuable source documents for the broadband authority to have in its library, its background of information. We've come to a consensus of what those key documents would be, and I think the most efficient way would be for me to organize them and present them for posting on Board Doc. Would that be a workable solution, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, that'd be a good survivable location for information.
Okay, I will, I'll put them in an organized fashion so that they'll be easy to find, the kind of those, the background documents, the, you know, the committee meeting minutes and that kind of stuff that you might want to refer to. But more importantly, the committee has been working on, we call it a synopsis, the synthesis of the key decisions and pieces of information and conclusions that the committee has come to with some recommendations so that as the broadband authority considers its moving forward with Plan B, it has some ideas of recommended first steps. This is just to help in transition, it's nothing which locks anybody into anything. But I wanted to advise the Board of Supervisors that the committee is trying to make that transition process as seamless as possible. If I understand correctly, Ms. Donahue, we're having a joint meeting on the 15th of February?
We haven't discussed that yet here, but I do know that all board members are available, all committee members are available.
Well, soon, soon. And then we would be able to perhaps speak more specifically to these documents. And I will go ahead and send out to the broadband authority members around, because you're the broadband authority members too, but I'll send out to all of you, the probably three key documents that would be most helpful to start with. They're not long, so they're just most helpful to bring you up to speed. If they're short enough, I know if you're like me, you will read it. If it's long, you kind of, you put it for one of those nights when you can't sleep and hope you get through it. So I'll be able to provide that in advance and that could be a launching for, a launch point for the broadband authority's future discussions. And at some point, this board is going to have to consider what to do with a broadband committee. If I understand correctly, and I was before my time, the committee was formed by motion, so it has to be dissolved by motion, so maybe something which the Board of Supervisors will consider in soon in an upcoming meeting to dispense with the broadband committee. And subject to your questions, I think that's all I have to report.
Thanks again for everything you've done.
Yeah, I would like to echo Mr. Whitson's comment, thank you for all that you've done. You've been instrumental in quite a bit of the work, I'm sure. I can't remember, I was just trying to remember if you were one of the first members appointed, but you were appointed shortly thereafter.
Yeah, I believe it was a year or so into the, or two years into this process. I mean, John Lazzinski had things kind of working along quite well. And I think to the credit of the committee itself that they've unanimously have said, hey, we're available to serve the broadband authority board in, you know, in a volunteer capacity. And candidly, I kind of considered, might be nice for that to be a resource, an ongoing resource. It doesn't have to be formalized, but.
Would you, you would consider staying on at the same salary?
Same salary and benefits too. Oh, you don't got my benefits. But, you know, it's very much a collaborative effort and I think we've come a long way. So it's going to be, it's going to be a good transition.
Thank you.
Do appreciate all your efforts. What I was thinking was if we can all agree that the authority, which is now official documentation wise, meet on February 15th at 5:30, location to be determined, then we can get the bylaws, the officers, that stuff done and ask the committee, broadband committee, to join us with that meeting, question and answer period, make sure that we understand how we're moving forward. And then we can, I assume in March, we'd have to dissolve the.
We can do it anytime you want.
Okay.
And the broadband authority could create a committee on the 15th that includes all the people that are on the board's broadband committee.
I am pleased.
Depends on what that group of people want to do compared to this group of people.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, don't get the two mixed up.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks again, really.
Let's see, all right, Building Committee.
Really?
We elected Mr. Fraser chairman of the Building Committee. Let him provide the report.
I think we've, we've kind of covered that in the earlier, under the Wiley-Wilson. That was basically the essential work that we did this month was to go over and discuss that proposal. I'm sure that there's a few other things that we discussed, but we had, there's really nothing to come forward with.
Okay. Recreational Facilities Authority?
Yes, I attended two meetings for the RCRFA this month, or this past month. One was a planning meeting for the fodder stack race and the other was the regularly held RCRFA meeting. The work on the bathroom installation is underway and also there's, I guess it's looking like the fodder stack race will be delayed at least until October. And so some of the plans, the planning for that just seemed insurmountable in the current situation. And it just seemed to make sense to punt until the fall when hopefully things will be improved. I did share resources from BDH that I had contacted previously with concerns that are for, specialize in those sorts of events and they're going to utilize those contacts as well.
Excellent. Sorry about the race, but definitely understand.
Oh, and we had, the reelection of officers was postponed because of COVID last year. So the officers were unanimously reappointed until, we have several terms up in June, July. So it made sense to wait and keep everybody in office until the summer. And Mr. Del Rosso didn't indicate he would be stepping away when his term expires this summer. And that's a terrible loss. He's a wonderful leader for that organization and I really appreciate the work he does and the straightforward way he leads the meeting and builds a lot of good consensus on that authority and he will be sorely missed.
Thank you for that. The Public Safety Committee?
We did not meet. I was thinking of scheduling a meeting for later this month.
Rules Committee?
Ms. Smith's the chair of that, but we, I think we went over that as well, what we did.
Thank you. Planning Commission update?
Yep, we met on January 20th and quickly reviewed, relatively quickly reviewed two tourist home special use permit applications and sent both to the BZA, one without a recommendation, or a few wrinkles, but it was otherwise a complete application, and the other one with a recommendation for approval. So, I mean, my, my hope is to really move that type of review as quickly as possible to BZA so we can focus on all the substantive work that Mr. Fraser, Mr. Conick really led the charge on last year. We heard a lengthy presentation from Mr. Brown, legal counsel, to Mr. Taylor regarding the rezoning application, the RR5 to R2 rezoning of Mount Airy Field in Sperryville. And there was quite a lot of discussion related to that. We've organized a work session for February the 10th, so a week from Wednesday, and the work session hopefully will be very efficient. It's split into two parts. There's a lot of reading material to go through, court cases, et cetera, on the rezoning application. My hope is to move that along so that it could be voted on by the Planning Commission in February and then moved on to the Board of Supervisors. And then the second part of the work session will focus on the sign orders, my understanding is that Mr. Goff will come prepared with some work product related to that. I understand Mr. Curry, Mr. Goff and Ms. Summers have been working on sign ordinance materials to review. So we're hoping for just a relatively focused work session on the 10th. And thanks to Mr. Conick for his work plan, we'll then jump in at a regular February meeting and take on wireless facility changes and then also solar renewable energy type language and the zoning ordinance, and then set another work session for a couple of weeks thereafter and just keep moving along. And once I get my feet on the ground, obviously I'll make some adjustments to our work plan, but the goal is just to keep moving through what good folks did last year.
Thank you and congratulations on your chair position.
Thank you.
Fire Levy Board, we are meeting on the 16th. The chiefs are meeting this Thursday. Fire Levy Board meeting will be at Company 1, starting at 6:00 PM. And this is our audit meeting, going over everything the chiefs send us from each of the companies. And we're always looking to try to figure out a way to streamline that process because it is a long one. Anything that I've forgotten out of the committee reports?
Sounds like everyone's working hard.
Yes.
I just wanted to let everyone know, I attended the BZA meeting last week. And the reason I asked about whether the elevator was, the charge was for the inspection of this is because there was quite a bit of fanfare made by a BZA member about ADA accessibility, ADA compliance of this courtroom space. So I just wanted to mention, you know, this is the second month in a row. The month before it was brought up that, that member of the BZA thought we had FOIA issues for not having our minutes properly prepared or prepared in a timely manner, which I think we're up to date now, correct, Mr. Curry?
Up or to dater?
How many, how many sets of minutes do we have outstanding?
December, January.
We're good. December, January.
Just two? Okay. So, and I never, I don't think that's, it's a good practice to be up to date on your minutes, but it's, I don't think it's a FOIA violation because one of the answers that's acceptable under FOIA is, is I don't have that. And frankly, until they're done and approved by the board, the answer is, I don't have that.
Oh, the draft minutes are FOIable, I guess?
Yeah, there you go.
But once we have the permanent ones, we can destroy the draft.
So I just wanted to recommend, I don't think I'll be at every BZA meeting, but it certainly is, is good to see what other public bodies are talking about. And I would recommend to other supervisors, if they have time to attend a BZA or Planning Commission meeting, I highly recommend it.
And they're still talking about A-bell signs, I understand.
Yes, that was brought up as well. I think it was put on the agenda by a four to one vote. I don't think there's an appetite to do anything except, I don't know how exactly to put it, but clearly to my mind, it's in the court of the Planning Commission, that's where it belongs. And if certain members of a quasi judiciary body want to make their feelings known about the sign ordinance, they should attend the Planning Commission meeting.
Well said.
And I don't, I don't know if other board members saw the video of that meeting or have other feelings about it, but.
I read one of the articles about it and of course, articles sometimes get written that aren't correct. But it seems that one member in particular, maybe two, it seems like several of them don't really know what their role is as a BZA, which is a quasi judicial body, that if it wasn't for the special use permits that they do in this community, they would only do variances in appeals to the design administrator. But it seems that they like the idea that they can somehow legislate, which is this board's role and prerogative. Not only, not only that, but even after I spoke to one member about that, he's still, or should I say they, anyway, very consistently trying to push their agenda. And I don't know what we can do about it, but it was like four years ago, this board, that makeup of the board voted to support BZA and Planning Commission members to take these classes and courses and become certified so that maybe they would have a better idea of how to do the job. Because ultimately, whether we're on this body or BZA or Planning Commission or any other body, we're trying to do the people's business and trying to do it as efficiently and professional as possible. But, you know, still we're kind of laid back because we're Rapid County and I appreciate that. But the fact when we have a makeup of the BZA that by a four to one vote puts something on the agenda to discuss that they had no business discussing is very troubling to me. Very troubling.
The other item that is problematic, I think with the BZA in particular, is that they don't have a public comment period. So if things come up in the course of discussion, there's no opportunity to really present the other side of the coin, which is, it's just challenging. And I'm not sure what the answer is. I think Mr. Fraser does bring up a very. I think Mr. Fraser does bring up a very good point, that education, and I advocated for additional planning and zoning education on the planning commission when I served on the planning commission. And I think any educational opportunities for the BZA, for members of this board, we had, I had discussed it with Michelle at one point prior to COVID and then that all sort of got set aside. But I, I really think education is, is a large key here and, and we should really see about setting up some classes, intensives, you know, something to get us all on the same page.
There was some discussion, as I understand, long before I was on this board of, and not to have pile work on to, to this body, but either doing away with or redirecting special use permit applications so they come from the planning commission directly to the board of supervisors and that would put the BZA back in a position where it truly is a zoning appeals body reviewing variances.
I think the best cure might be to just make Airbnbs, some combination of higher fee, a more complete application, empower the zoning administrator more, make them a simple application process.
Yeah.
That is more thorough. I'd like to price it higher because we seem to get so many of them and I'm not sure that they pay for themselves, but I'd like to look at that process. I, I just, it does, it seems like it's, I can't tell you the last time one was denied.
Well, it's now, it kind of comes down to minimum acreage and that's it.
So, I mean, what, what would be the basis for denial of an Airbnb? And can't we just craft an application process and collect a, a, a larger fee as part of that instead of, instead of making work for that body that they really, it's the same, it's like, almost like rope, you know? We need to do this, I don't see this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, but B and B, Airbnb, tourist homes, it's, it's almost no opposition from the neighbors if it's on a state right away. And I think our zoning ordinance amendments are taking, gonna take care of quite a bit of that coming up.
Your main amendments tonight speak, have significant changes to this section. There were discussions at the planning commission level about whether some forms of short-term rental should be by right and others still go through SE or SUP. That is certainly a door that the board can walk through sometime in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, immediately I noticed at our first planning commission meeting, how much time we're spending on these, and it just, given zoning is, zoning and land use smarts around here are key to the future of Rappahanna County, why are we spending all this time talking about whether people put fences around their pools or their tourist home? So, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me.
Insurance companies usually take care of that discussion.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, it's really just making sure that the planning commission for starters is focused on what they're supposed to do. But yeah, I agree with Ms. Smith, if there's some, if there's some responsible way to clean up this process so that the planning commission in particular can focus on what they're supposed to be doing and probably relieve the BZA of a lot of administrative work, I think everybody would be well served. And I like the idea of increasing application fees too.
We did have an analysis at one point that showed that those were sort of paying for themselves, if I remember correctly, Mr. Curry, but I, I still think that, that there's some increases we could make there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like continued efforts with both what you're thinking, Ms. Smith and Mr. Whitson, maybe you can.
Yeah, let's, let's find a way to streamline it.
Yep. All right, I think in the treasurer's reports, we've got all these reports, is there anything that we need to highlight? I am aware that at six o'clock, and I apologize.
There's one, there's one quarter of meals and lodging tax revenue that didn't seem like we should have a figure. I just want to understand that. It was a bar graph, vertical bar graph, looked like third quarter data. I was just curious why we have it.
This.
Is it timing issue?
We're on a fiscal year basis for first, second, third, fourth quarter.
Right.
And this is when the money is received, so we're in, we're in the third quarter of the fiscal year and the monies were due in January, so that is the third quarter. However, it will be accrued back and so only the, what is shown here as second quarter and third quarter will actually be in FY '21.
But we're in the beginning of the third quarter of the fiscal year, why do we have data?
It's, it's, as the note states at the bottom, it's when the money was received.
Okay, so it's today?
January.
Okay.
But it is attributable to sales that occurred in the second quarter, which is why it will be accrued back for accounting purposes.
Yeah, so, anyway, I get it. All right, thank you.
Any concerns out of what you're seeing? It looks like we're.
Nothing.
Great. Um, let's see, do we normally go through the rest of these? I don't think we do to give everybody a chance to grab something to eat.
Mr. Curry, your reports are great. Thank you.
If I could, make the suggestion, is it possible that if we have any additional questions that we forget at this time, that maybe we can bring them up, maybe just move matters presented by the board, K1, to after the seven o'clock reconvene?
After the public hearing?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, yeah.
All second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll re-adjourn, or we'll adjourn and reconvene.
We'll recess.
Yes, until seven o'clock at the, is it?
High school auditorium.
Auditorium.
The high school?
Yes.
High school.
Thank you, everyone.